And Mayor, we're ready to go whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. We're all here, so why don't we go ahead and you said we're ready to go with Maryam and everybody, so we'll go ahead and begin and welcome everyone. Good evening to the San Bruno City Council meeting of July the 14th, 2020. And if we could, please have roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here. May I ask, please, our Vice Mayor if he would lead us in the pledge this evening?
All right, there's our flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move on to public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed three minutes. Is the council policy to refer matters raised in this forum for staff or investigation or action where appropriate? The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. And Clerk, do we have any public comment?
This time, I'm not seeing any hands raised. I see one hand raised. Nicola Bosco Alvarez. Just one moment while I bring you into the room. Hi, Nicola, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I am a San Bruno resident. I live on the 900 block of Hensley, and I am just concerned about the homeless encampment that just continues to grow that is right at the end of the block, in the park, actually. And if there's anything that the city is doing anything about it, or can you do anything about it?
Any other comments? And please, you have time. So, or was that the question?
Well, I mean, that's my question. There's, I have a lot of comments. I have a lot of comments about it. It is very concerning, the, well, not only just the amount of trash, human waste, also the amount of traffic and people riding, coming through, carrying items through at all hours of the night. I do hear it happening at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning. It's just like, I mean, it just continues to grow and the amount of, I can't tell you how many people are there, obviously, but I mean, it's just like, it's a lot. It's very concerning for us as residents.
Okay, appreciate your comment. I know council is aware and staff. What I would like to know is if there's a possibility for you to give a contact so somebody can reach out to you and maybe answer what questions you have in addition to if some others that you may have that you didn't address on this topic.
Yes.
On the camera, please.
How should I do that?
I think if you could direct it to the city clerk, Melissa, and Melissa, if you can give that to her, either whether you can send it to her or if you have to do it via Zoom, that would be appreciated.
You would have to email me. My contact information is on the city website, or if you have a pen, I can give it to you right now. I don't have a way to message you through Zoom.
Okay, yes, I do have, I am able to take it right now.
Okay, it's mthurman@sanbruno.ca.gov.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Alvarez, and thank you, Melissa. We do have another speaker, and if there's anybody else that wants to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, but please raise your visual hand so that we can get you on the board. Next, please.
Okay, next, we have Paul Lipinski. I'm trying to get you unmuted, Paul. Hi, Paul, can you hear us?
Yeah, you're really scratchy.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
We hear you perfect.
Okay, thank you. I got three topics. First, I'd like the city council to have a proclamation proclaiming support for police firefighters and emergency personnel, and that the mayor and the city council guarantee that 911 calls will be answered to ensure the safety of the citizens and their property. My second topic is, I watched the last few meetings on the marijuana proposal for the ballot, and I just can't help but feel empathy for the city manager and the city attorney having to sit through these debates. I mean, how many hours did we spend discussing this issue? I think the council should just have a member make a motion, get a second, and vote on it, and that we can move on to other stuff that's important. These long drawn-out discussions just seem to be a waste of time to me. I mean, I know it's the worst thing for a politician is to have to take a vote on a difficult issue, but you guys ran for office and you voted good or bad. My last issue is, it kind of piggybacks on what the first lady was talking about. Every day I go out for my daily workout, and there's numerous vans and trailers and mobile homes parked around different parts of the city, and it appears a lot of them are dumping human waste onto the streets, and it's particularly bad on Cherry where the 380 overpasses, it really smells like it's an outhouse. I think someone from the city should go around and check for these sanitation violations, because these things haven't moved in a long time. There's a trailer parked under the overpass probably for the last month and a half, and it hasn't been moved. And I wonder if they have the same 72-hour parking limits as vehicles do. Those are my three topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Paul.
The next person with their hand up is Joshua Frome. I'm sorry, I keep saying that wrong. Just one moment while I bring you in and unmute you. Hi, Joshua, can you hear us?
Sure can.
Okay. Let me give me a screen share, and whenever you're ready.
Yeah, so I'm really only calling in to talk about one topic, and I hate that I'm doing this, because I realize that this stuff needs to go somewhere. But right out in front of my house, the city has posted a notice that a 5G small cell tower is going to be built. It's going to be 40 feet tall. It's going to be a metal pole. I'm quite unhappy about the idea of one of these things going in front of my house. And look, I'm sort of hearing that these cell towers are going in in all sorts of places in San Bruno, and nobody that is getting one of these towers near their house is particularly happy about it. So I'd like to understand what we have available to us to negotiate with Verizon on some of these locations. I mean, if the city is just issuing a permit without thinking about location, like, it makes sense to me that you might put these cellphone towers in like business districts, for instance, where you're not impacting people's property values, or, you know, the general conditions of a neighborhood. But I don't know what the city has, I don't know how the city negotiated this, how the city is developing permits for it. I called into the permit office already, and I spoke with a very nice person who's managing the project, but she really didn't have a lot of information other than, you know, tough shit, this is the federal law provides for Verizon to kind of do this. It feels a little bit like we're being railroaded. So I'm just asking for the city council to maybe make some comments on this, like, let San Bruno residents know what we can expect, and if there's anything we can do to get these towers moved to better locations. And I realize they have to go in somewhere. So again, I'm trying to be really pragmatic about this. I don't want one of my neighbors to have to deal with it either. I just, I was kind of hoping these towers could be in places that don't impact our neighborhoods quite the way they're doing now. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, obviously, somebody in that department does have your contact. So thank you for your comments. I'm seeing no other hands at this time, so we will move on. I'm sorry.
There is one other hand.
I apologize. Okay.
Leslie M. Lay. Leslie, one moment while I bring you into the room. Leslie, I'm trying to unmute you. Hi, Leslie, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, council members. As you know, I sent out a letter today addressing this issue on the proposed 5G tower that's going to be installed on Santa Lucia. And this has been going on since 2017 through 2019, I believe, and the appeal was won, and I understand we've lost it in a suit by Verizon. But I wanted to know if there is some way that this can be postponed until further study is done. It was just announced tonight on the BBC News that Great Britain has done a 180-degree turn and will not be using the Huawei 5G communication network in their country. And this coincides with, I believe, the United States is not going to be using this system either. And to date, it was reported that no 5G system in the world can provide the technology service that Huawei can offer. But due to security issues, you know, is there any way that this continuing installation can be stopped or held until we know better as to what type of 5G system is going to be used, and how it's going to affect the privacy of our neighborhood, all of our neighborhoods? And as you know, our neighborhood has fought long and hard for this. We were very proud that we won it, and we're terribly disappointed that we're going to have this forced down our throats. So what can you do to stall this out until we can have a better understanding as to what system is going to be used, how is our privacy being affected, and at what date do they plan to install this pole once you and the city have made your arrangements or your agreements with this company, with all the companies? And that's about all my question is.
Thank you, Leslie, very much.
Can I see one other hand raised? It's Mr. Ramirez, just one moment. Hi, Mr. Ramirez, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Ismael Ramirez. I live on Hensley Avenue, and I'm just here to talk about the homeless encampment on Forest Lane Park. And I've been in contact with Officer Rogi. He's the contact for the homelessness, sorry about that, and with council member Mason as well. And, you know, every day it just seems like this homeless encampment is just getting bigger and bigger. I mean, there's more of a mess around the block. I've seen public urination, intoxication, physical fights. There's one car that's associated to the encampment that just causes a lot of trouble, goes up and down, speeds at upwards to, you know, 50 miles an hour. And, you know, we have a lot of kids around the neighborhood. And, you know, I'm just afraid that one of these days, that guy is just going to cause a big accident, and it's going to be, you know, unfortunate. So I just want to know what are the next steps that police are going to take, you know, because this is really getting out of hand. And I know a lot of my neighbors are fed up with this as well. And yeah, that's all I wanted to say. I just want to say thank you to the police for keeping us safe, and we really appreciate all the steps you're taking. But we just want to know, you know, what's next, what's going to come. So yeah, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
And that looks like the last hand that was raised.
Okay, so we're going to move on to announcements and presentations. Item A, introduce new Assistant City Manager, and I'm going to turn this over to our city manager to do the introduction.
Hi, to the city council and members of the public at home. My name is Javon Grogan, and I'm the city manager. I have a pleasure tonight of introducing a lady by the name of Jennifer Brazil, who started just last week as the city's Assistant City Manager and Chief People Officer. Chief People Officer, meaning she is the person that is chiefly responsible for overseeing our Human Resources Department and supporting our employees. And so it's a great excitement that we welcome Jennifer to our organization, even during this challenging time of budget in COVID-19. And Jennifer has lived up to her rock star status in just the last seven days. So Jennifer, again, welcome. And if you would like to say anything, I see you have been brought into the virtual room.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the council, I am very happy to join the City of San Bruno team. I'm joining City of San Bruno, most recently from City of Napa, and I have over 20 years of public sector experience. Throughout my career, I've developed systems to create cohesive, safe, healthy, and productive and happy workplaces. I've done that through establishing policies and procedures, enhancing work practices, implementing training and development programs and tools, while fostering strong internal and external relationships to support the organization. I'm looking forward to partnering with all of you and with the community that I now call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil, and welcome.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item B, receive report from the San Bruno Police and Fire Departments regarding July 4th, 2020, public safety service calls and other information. Chief Johansson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council, and members of the community listening at home. Try to get my screen share up here, so hopefully you can see the presentation. As mentioned, I am Ryan Johansson, your Chief of Police, and I'm here this evening to make a brief presentation, kind of reporting back on our 4th of July safety operations. I'll be joined by Fire Chief Ari Delay, who will present on the fire side of operations immediately following my presentation, and then we will both be prepared to take any questions you might have about the 4th of July operations from this year. So moving right into it, a little bit on the background of the 4th of July for us, right? The 4th of July presents a number of safety challenges for the police department. Among these is the obvious use of illegal fireworks before, during, and after the 4th of July. And as we'll see through this presentation, we are well aware of the fact that it is, the illegal fireworks use is rampant, and we'll talk a little bit about what we do to try and mitigate some of it. However, additionally, we have large unruly gatherings that tend to come with the 4th of July celebration, and this year was no exception, although a little bit different with some of the shelter in place orders in COVID-19, which we will talk about. There's also a significant increase in alcohol use, which is problematic for the police department as dealing with violators, members of the public, when they're heavily inebriated is additionally challenging. And then this year, we had some additional challenges in conducting enforcement due to COVID-19, and the need to try and keep staff and the public safe while we go about our business. All of this is exacerbated when the fourth falls on a weekend, and it falling on a Saturday is even worse than when it falls on a Sunday. So I'll discuss that a little bit as well, but you'll see some increased numbers this year. I think they can be explained by the fact that more people are home with the shelter in place, and then also the fact that it fell on a Saturday always seems to make things a little bit more difficult for us from a law enforcement standpoint on the 4th of July. Every year, we conduct expansive education prevention and enforcement operations in an effort to mitigate some of these problems. And we'll talk specifically about what those things include. I did report back to you a couple of weeks ago about what you could anticipate our operations looking like, and that we'll report back on what the results of those things were. It's important to understand that these expansive education prevention and enforcement operations are essentially funded by the sale of safe and sane fireworks. And we'll talk about some of the experiences of other county cities with 4th of July in my presentation here tonight, and just know that the extensive enforcement that we conduct is facilitated by the fact we have a funding source for it. I will come right out and say that I am well aware that all of the things I talk about tonight are not meant to pretend like I think that this stops the rampant illegal fireworks use. I simply want to illustrate that the police department is attempting to do everything it can to make the 4th of July enjoyable for all of our residents and visitors, and that we know that we're not stopping all of the illegal fireworks use that is problematic for folks, but doing everything within our power and trying to improve every single year in how we serve the community in this respect. So I told you I'd talk a little bit about other cities. Let's just discuss what some of the other cities in county, in the county experience on the 4th of July. These are the number of fireworks-related calls for service on the 4th of July alone for some other area cities. And San Mateo, you can see it, 172. East Palo Alto had 121. South San Francisco had 91. Daly City had 88. And none of these cities allow safe and sane fireworks. I just think this is important to illustrate that even when you don't sell or have safe and sane fireworks, illegal fireworks are a problem on the 4th of July. And to what degree that varies based upon safe and sane sales is to be discussed, certainly. But I think this helps to illustrate that other cities are dealing with similar problems. And also of note is that they do not have the funding source we do for the large-scale enforcement operations that we deploy. And we'll talk about some of those costs and how they're covered in my presentation as we move forward. Generally, these cities actually do not respond to fireworks complaints, which is also important to understand. When you do not have the additional enforcement initiatives that we undertake, then their posture is to put out the information that the public calls in about illegal fireworks use as information for patrol units only, and they do not dispatch officers actively to these calls because they lack the resources to do so, which is certainly understandable when you look at these numbers. Now, Pacifica had 191 calls related to fireworks on the 4th of July, and this is the only other San Mateo County city that allows safe and sane fireworks use to sales. They conduct enforcement similar to ours, and they also fund the fees imposed on the sale of safe and sane fireworks. So they have a similar model to ours. So we'll talk a little bit about the pre-4th of July operations, what we do in preparation. All department personnel, police department personnel are ordered to work the 4th of July. I know this has been talked about year over year, but I think it is worth mentioning again here because it truly is a fairly significant burden that these folks take on. I always mention each year that the 4th of July is my oldest daughter's birthday. She turned 18 this year on the 4th of July, and for the last 15 4ths of Julies, I have been at work on her birthday. And so the police department does make a significant sacrifice in an effort to ensure that we are providing the best possible safe environment for our community that we can. We conduct and put together a robust incident action plan in advance. This takes into account data from previous years and attempts to allocate our resources as best we can in order to be effective. This is about a 40-page plan that really spells out how we're going to go about trying to conduct enforcement before, during, and after the 4th of July. We also created a joint fire and police public safety announcement, and disseminated this via social media in an effort to kind of educate folks in advance. We conduct safety meetings along with the fire department with all booth operators. So every organization that wants to run a fireworks booth has to go through a safety meeting with PD and Fire, discussing not only the safety around the booth, but the importance of helping us to mitigate illegal fireworks sales and use through their efforts. That includes educational flyers that we provide to the booths that get placed into every single fireworks sale bag or with every single box that gets purchased, attempting to educate the public about the administrative fines and the consequences of using illegal fireworks within the city. We also put out informational warning notices to all city facilities. We make advanced contact with known violation locations with the police department. So we will go out to locations that were cited the previous year, or where we know historically that we have large unruly gatherings traditionally year over year. We will attempt to contact the residents there and gain some cooperation from them in advance of the 4th to try and mitigate some of the issues before they begin. This year, we really began using data to focus our resource deployment. I think this is largely what is responsible for some of the improved results, and will continue to be responsible for improved results year over year. The fact that we now have some aggregate data we can use in order to kind of concentrate where we spend some of our time in an effort to actually generate some results. You'll see, when we talk about the timing of call volume, while the 4th of July seems like this really huge event, and it certainly is for PD and Fire, the reality is it's about a three-hour window of time that the most illegal activity is concentrated in. And so the more we can focus our resources where they belong, the more effective we can be in that really brief but somewhat aggressive timeframe. We also conduct dedicated firework enforcement details prior to the 4th, because as we all know, the fireworks are not only used on the 4th of July. This year, I think anecdotally, we could certainly all agree that they started even earlier than seems normal, and so we do put out some enforcement details in advance of the 4th. So 4th of July staffing, as I mentioned, all of department personnel are ordered to work. This includes about 50 staff, officers, dispatchers, clerks, CSOs. It's not just uniformed cops. All these folks are making the sacrifice to be there on the 4th of July in an effort to try to make the holidays safe for y'all. 36 sworn and 14 non-s sworn assigned to the detail. Many of these folks worked 16 consecutive hours on the 4th of July. Many of these folks started work at 7:00 a.m., work in day shift, and then they stay over until 11:00 p.m. We do what we can to try and provide as many people as possible to keep things safe. We staff all of our patrol beats as usual, plus we have dedicated enforcement units that are deployed specifically for fireworks and illegal fireworks enforcement. Some of the tactics we deploy are marked and unmarked police units. This is important to note because sometimes you may have called in a complaint, and you may never see a police officer show up the way you're used to seeing a police officer. This is because not all of the cops that are working that night are driving black and white police cars. We're obviously a little bit more effective in catching some of the violators when we are a little bit more incognito, and so many of the units that are driving around are unmarked, really they look like civilian vehicles. We use both uniformed and plainclothes personnel for the same reason. We use bicycles and motorcycles in order to be more mobile through some of the neighborhoods. And we've begun, two years ago, we started using undercover surveillance. This has proved to be increasingly effective in the last couple of years, and I think you'll see when we talk about strategies for coming years, that expanding our use of undercover surveillance is probably a smart direction for us to move in, very, very effective. We're also, it's very important to note that the 4th of July is not solely a police department operation. I know that our chief delay is going to talk about the fire operations, but there's an entire staff of dedicated fire personnel who come in to work the holiday. There's also parks personnel who come in to help us patrol the parks and keep them from becoming fire hazards and other safety issues. And then the Streets Department plays a huge role in the massive cleanup effort that has to occur after the 4th. So my hat is off to all of them for their sacrifice as well. This is not something the police department undertakes on its own. So calls for service, data, data, data. We handled about 276 calls for service on the 4th of July this year. This is a lot of calls for a department our size. The peak activity period was between 8:30 p.m. and 11:30 p.m., and during that timeframe, we handled about 177 of those 276 calls concentrated in a three-hour timeline. 182 of the 276 calls were fireworks-related. This is a significant increase from the 147 that we had last year, but it's actually not very many more than what we had the year before at 173 in 2018. So not a huge outlier. And the numbers are fairly normal for what we see when the 4th falls on an actual weekend day, either a Saturday or a Sunday. Most of these reports and calls we're getting still tend to be really quite vague and only marginally workable from a police standpoint. And I'll talk a bit about the process that we have to engage in in order to conduct this enforcement. But suffice it to say that when we get reports, folks that are doing the best they can to contribute to safety, but they're calling in and telling us a general area where there's aerial fireworks, and they're hearing loud booms and explosions, this is not really information that's terribly helpful to the police department, to be quite frank. We see them, we know them. Finding out where these things are occurring is not the challenge. It's putting together the probable cause needed to make an actual, to issue an actual citation is a challenge, and we'll talk a bit more about that as we continue on. Again, officers have to actually on-view violations or to issue a citation. This means that the officer has to specifically see exactly who commits what violation themselves. It's not enough to be told by someone else or even to see video. I'll expand a bit on that in a minute. Observationally, I will fully acknowledge that illegal fireworks did seem notably heavier this year than last and even than other recent years. We had far fewer large-scale gatherings, which I'm hopeful is because most people are attempting to contribute to the health crisis that we're all dealing with right now. But the reality is, what this did is it really just kind of spread out the violations. Instead of having a handful of really big parties, we had a whole bunch of really small ones. And this kind of spread the violations around and probably made it seem and feel and sound even worse than it might have been. So let's talk about enforcement. The way that we conduct enforcement is through the issuance of a $1,000 administrative citation for possession and/or use of illegal fireworks. Anything that doesn't bear the state fire marshal's safety seal, pretty much anything that flies in the air or explodes is illegal. If we see you shoot it off, or we find you in possession of it, we will issue the $1,000 administrative citation. Again, important to note here is that the citing officer themselves has to directly observe a specific person committing a specific violation to issue these citations. I know that sounds somewhat ridiculous, but this is the way that the law works, and it's not something we can work around. The officer is then burdened with safely detaining the person that's committed this violation. And it's somewhat important to note that what we're dealing with here is essentially a municipal code violation. a municipal code violation. And because we're dealing with a relatively low-level violation, please understand that the police officers are faced with difficult decisions when it comes to resistance they might meet among people who are committing these violations or people who are running, fighting, belligerent, intoxicated. And how far a police officer is going to go to effectively issue that citation is something that we deal with every Fourth of July in trying to give balance between providing the enforcement that our community wants and deserves and while still ensuring the safety of the officers, the safety of the public, and mitigating potential liabilities to the city. So it's very, very challenging. I'll paint a little bit of a picture here for what this looks like. Essentially, we're driving around, riding around on bikes, walking around on foot, and we're observing the same violations that the community is. However, we have the burden of making sure we can find out exactly who is committing a given violation. And then we have to get in close enough to the individual before they disappear into a residence or into a backyard to safely detain them and issue an administrative citation. So I'm sure you can see this can be somewhat challenging. Also important to note that violators for these sections must be cited, not physically arrested. This is an administrative violation of the municipal code, and they're issued an administrative citation, not physically arrested and taken to jail. We have in the past used a health and safety code violation in lieu of the administrative citation. This is 12677 of the Health and Safety Code, which is a misdemeanor we can arrest for. However, after years of using that violation section, we came to realize that these folks were going to court, paying usually a $25 to $50 fine, and then going about their own business. So the feeling is that the $1,000 administrative citation serves as a much more effective deterrent, and that's why we focus on that section rather than the Health and Safety Code. It's also kind of important to understand that we can only seize evidence that's in plain view. This is not a case where because we caught you shooting off illegal fireworks, we can then go into a house or a garage or a car and begin seizing other fireworks even when we kind of know they're there. And this presents a bit of a challenge because, as you'll see when we report on some of the results from this year, we actually issued five citations at one residence alone this year because we catch one person, take what we can see, and 10 minutes later, they're doing the same thing over again. And so we tried to deliver a message this year that was unacceptable by giving a lot of attention to the residences that refused to stop once they were just talked to by the police department. Resident-provided video has been a topic of discussion this year. It's important to understand that we value that if you've shot video of a neighbor or someone committing these offenses. But also important to understand that that alone is not enough for us to issue a citation. It's good for us to help develop some of the reasonable suspicion we need to move in and contact somebody, but we can't simply take a video from a member of the public and then issue a citation based upon that. Even if we can identify who the person is, we do need to on view the violation. We do have the ability to cite people who were in control of gatherings where illegal fireworks are being used, but there is the need for us to prove their knowledge in kind of condoning of what's going on. And the way we typically do that is that before we issue a citation to a homeowner, we typically issue a warning, letting them know that we're aware this is occurring at your residence or at your party that you're in control with or you're in control of or at your gathering. And we let them know that we will commit a citation if we have to return to the residence. And that did occur multiple times this year and last year. So here is the data as it exists. This year, we issued 38 administrative citations. This is almost double what we issued last year at 21, and it's the most we have ever issued as a police department. Of the 38 people who were cited, 25 of them were San Bruno residents. This is higher than normal. Most years, we sit below 50% of the people cited are San Bruno residents. This year, as you can see, notably over 50%. I mentioned that five sites were issued at one problem location, and I just want to tip my hat a little bit to my folks here. I believe that this enforcement activity is truly commendable given the current environment that these folks are working in. It is scary to go out and contact members of the public and conduct enforcement when you don't know who's healthy and who isn't and when there's a very serious health pandemic that that we're all dealing with. And when you add to that some of the recent sentiment regarding police and some of the flat-out physical attacks that have been announced on police officers, I am exceedingly proud of the San Bruno Police Department staff for being willing to go out and conduct the enforcement that they believe their community wants despite those obvious challenges and despite putting themselves in harm's way throughout doing so. We seized about 58 pounds of live illegal fireworks. This is about 35 pounds over the annual average. We also seized about 100 pounds of spent fireworks. Our preliminary cost estimate, you can see here, I'm going to try to move my screen around so I can read it more appropriately. But this is how the costs break down for this year. The police department created a public service announcement that's mostly staff hours at $481 and change. The community services department provides staff on the Fourth of July. That's about $1,700. The fire department has the fire marshal administrative and inspection hours. This is basically for inspecting the booths and ensuring that they are compliant and safe before they're operational at $2,400. The fire department's Fourth of July staffing and logistics at about $13,000. The police department's Fourth of July staffing and logistics at $28,000. The pre and post Fourth of July education enforcement and logistics, this is all from the police department at $5,700. Public works cleanup costs, including labor and equipment, at $3,000 for a total of $55,527.07 this year. This is fairly consistent with the year-over-year what we tend to see. But this is the preliminary cost estimate that we've put together for this year's Fourth of July operations. It is again important to note that these costs are covered by fees collected from safe and sane fireworks sales and that cities without such a funding source do not conduct operations at the scale that we do. So every year, we conduct an annual debrief to go through what we did, what worked, what didn't work, what we want to change for the following year, and I'll share some of those findings with you now. We're still in the debriefing process from this year, but we do have some findings. We focus mostly on enhancing what works well. And as I mentioned earlier, we want to increase the use of our undercover surveillance units. This essentially puts undercover officers in plainclothes, walking the streets and directing in units to issue citations via cell phone. They can blend in more easily with the crowd, and they can observe specific violators, and it makes it a little bit easier for us to conduct enforcement. We want to continue expanding use of the responsible party clause. This is where I said that we can issue a citation to someone who's in control of a gathering or a homeowner. I think that it sends a pretty powerful message that if you're having a party, it is your responsibility to ensure that these things are not occurring at it. We will begin conducting bi-bust operations a little bit earlier next year. This is where we set up to purchase illegal fireworks with a police officer in order to take some inventory off the street and convey that they're not welcome in San Bruno. But I think that we learned this year, we need to start those a little bit earlier in the year in order for them to be effective. We'll increase our use of unmarked vehicles and decrease the use of marked units because they just stick out like a sore thumb. Expand our bike and foot patrols. Increase our use of data to direct our resources, which I already kind of spoke to earlier. We'll also focus on reducing or eliminating what's ineffective. And the only thing we've identified there, I already mentioned, which is that limiting our response to calls without specific locations and/or suspect information. So those generic calls of, you know, in this vicinity, I'm seeing aerial fireworks. It really kind of is a waste of our resources to go respond out to that when we're probably more effective continuing to work the enforcement that the officers are already working on on the street and trying to issue citations. And then we will be considering some other enhancements. Some of those things being considered as a return to the use of outside agency assistance in our details. Years ago, we used to bring other agencies into the city to assist with our operations in order to expand staffing. We did run into a number of issues with that, not the least of which is that those folks are a little less vested in the safety in our city just because they don't work for San Bruno. Additionally, is the fact that not all other agencies, not to be disparaging at all, but not all other agencies conduct business the same way that San Bruno PD does. And we like the way we do business. I think our community values it, and we want to protect that. But we will consider it, and then we'll also be evaluating some new observation technologies, their legality, and their effectiveness for Fourth of July fireworks enforcement. So that concludes my portion of the presentation, and I will turn it over to Chief RE Delay to talk about the fire operations. Chief?
Great. Can everyone hear me okay?
You're echoing, chief.
Give me just a moment. Okay, are we good now?
You're good.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, RE Delay, your fire chief. Here today this evening to give you a brief overview of the fire department's operations for this year's Fourth of July celebrations and events. If we can move on, Chief Johansson with the next slide. So the Fourth of July staffing for the San Bruno Fire Department. Day-to-day, we staff two ALS engine companies, one ALS ladder truck and one battalion chief in the city typically daily. So for the Fourth of July festivities, we staffed one additional ALS engine company. We staffed all of our fire prevention folks. We're on duty as extra personnel that day, and myself as the fire chief was there as well. If we can move on there, chief. So to review some of our calls for service, the San Bruno Fire Department handled 24 calls for service on the Fourth of July itself. And very similar to the police, our peak activity was between 9:30 and 1:30 AM with about half of our calls for service during this four-hour period alone at a total of 13. And 25% of our calls that day were fire-related for a total of six. The chart up on the screen is just a brief breakdown. We've noticed that there is an increase in fire-related calls during the weekend leading up to the Fourth of July. And as you'll see, the period from June 6th through the 14th, we had one fire-related call in a total of 64 calls in the city. June 15th through 21st, no fire-related calls, which was fortunate, but a total of 72 calls for service in the city. And then the period from the 22nd through the 28th, we had nine fire-related calls for a total of 75 here in the city. And then that period that covers the Fourth of July, the 29th through July 5th, we had a total of 13 fire-related calls and a total of 88 calls for service in the city. Some of the enforcement efforts, the fire department, we typically respond obviously to emergency calls, but we also provide patrols to patrol throughout the city. All of our engine companies, ladder trucks, battalion chiefs, fire prevention staff and myself were out patrolling that evening specifically during the height of the activity. And I wanted to bring your attention to the picture that you see. This was taken from my vehicle, and it's something that I wanted to share with the council and the importance of those patrols. If you look in the picture, this is the intersection of San Bruno Avenue and El Camino Real. Our fire prevention staff who was out patrolling noticed some flames off in the distance, initiated a response from the fire department, and went to provide initial suppression efforts. We had an outside receptacle at a business right there at the intersection of San Bruno Avenue and El Camino, and those two trash receptacles were fully involved with fire, and we had a lot of brush that caught fire, and the flames were, as you can see, over the height of the roof of the building. So those patrols proved valuable this night, and it was early detection and the early suppression efforts of the fire prevention staff were able to get that fire detected and responded to quickly and preventing more damage. And obviously, in this time of COVID and all the fiscal situation, it's, you know, I think it's great that they were able to stop a fire from causing major damage to one of the structures and one of our businesses in our community. All right. Some of our observations from the fire department's perspective. Again, very similar, the illegal fireworks were notably heavier this year than most, both legal and illegal, I would say. It was a very active night. I wanted to again highlight that our fire prevention staff was critical in that early detection of fire there at El Camino and San Bruno Avenue and wanted to definitely make sure that we recognize the efforts of our public works and our San Bruno Parks Department for their work doing weed abatement throughout the city preceding the Fourth of July celebrations and also the contractors that we had here in the city conducting weed abatement efforts as well. And then you'll be happy to note, important piece is there was no injuries from the Fourth of July activities. And that's kind of a wrap, and that's all we have from the fire department's perspective. And myself and Chief Johansson are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you to both chiefs for your report and detailed data. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Think Laura was showing her hand?
Okay. I see a hand, but I didn't see, it's not attached to anybody, but thank you. Laura, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you so much. I was actually trying to find the raise the hand, and I couldn't find it, so all I can do is raise my hand. So I actually had, so thank you, it's great presentations, a lot of details. I appreciate, I really do appreciate everything that public safety does. You know, I know what it's like to have your spouse not be home on special occasions and to know that every year, regardless of what you've got going on, the Fourth of July, you're out there working and really defending our city and making sure that our residents stay safe. As many residents know and experienced, what a horrible few weeks leading up to the Fourth of July, just so many times, the legal fireworks going off. And I realize how challenging that is because even when we're here and we're, we see it go off above us, we have no idea where it came from, even though it feels like it's in my backyard. So thank you for all that. I do have a question I just wanted to ask about the police chief Johansson. You commented on if I'm throwing a party that I can get cited for having some, even though, I guess I wanted to know, even if you didn't see anything at my property, actually see somebody light it, because you know that that group of 50 people over at that house, that party, is it actually shooting off of legal fireworks? Could you cite them? And kind of want to know a little bit more about that.
Yeah, the short answer to your question, Councilmember Davis, is yes. If the officer, you know, has the cause to believe that the fireworks are coming from that gathering, that party, that residence, then we do have the authority to issue a citation to the person that we deem to be responsible for that party. Usually, this will be the homeowner or the renter, the person that is kind of in control. As I mentioned, we usually, not usually, we will always issue a warning in advance to that homeowner saying, look, we know the fireworks are associated with your residence. Oftentimes, it's because they're occurring in backyards or somewhere that we don't readily want to go. And we tell them, we're not going to tolerate it all night just because you're in your backyard. If you have to come back out and we see the same thing, we're going to issue you a citation, regardless of whether you're the one that lit the firework or not.
Yeah. That's good because I can't even imagine how you guys can actually physically see somebody lighting a fireworks, how complicated that is with crowds and people and the darkness. So I think we need to publicize that information and get it out there so we really can discourage the use of illegal fireworks. So thank you.
Councilmember Mason?
Hi. I just wanted to thank everyone. We had our family out during some of our safe and sane fireworks, and we had a number of police cars come by, very respectful of the street and the people who were on it. And I also wanted to make sure I thanked the fire department. You know, every year, people do these illegal fireworks, and we're out checking to make sure that our roofs don't catch on fire. So it's really nice because we just saw so much, there was so much, not just transparency, but you really felt that there was a presence by both the fire and police on the Fourth of July. And I just want to say it's really very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council at this time? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Salazar.
I was just going to add my thanks as well to both of the chiefs and your staffs for all the extra work that you guys put in. So you guys did a great job. Sounds like, you know, we got through unscathed, but it was, it was, there definitely all the efforts that you guys put in ahead of time and all the work that you guys put into it. So much appreciated. Pass along the thanks.
And Councilmember Medina?
Yes. I want to join that group of letting you guys know how much appreciated your work is, being away from your families and not being able to kind of enjoy a special event. So thank you. And I think the biggest thing to stress to our community is how difficult it really is. Where I was in a socially-distanced backyard with a couple other people, and fireworks were going over on one side of the house and then the other side of the house, and it's like, okay, I think it's over there, but knowing that you have to witness it, I mean, it's extraordinarily difficult. So thank you for what you've done.
And we do have a member of the public, a city clerk?
Yes, it's Stephen Seymour. Stephen, just one moment while I bring you in, although it could be Sandra. Hi, Stephen or Sandra, can you hear us?
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Sandra Perez Vargas. I'm calling because this is the first year that I felt so completely confident that everything that could be done would be done to find people who are blowing off all those fireworks, and the numbers really reflect that. I'm so very grateful to the chief of police and the fire chief. I think you guys did a wonderful job, and I think there was a lot of talk afterwards once the numbers came out of the citations that were given. It just really showed how hard you worked. And I was wondering, I don't know the legality of this, but as another deterrent, if the people who were cited, if their names were made public, I don't know if that's something you're interested in pursuing because that might make some people in the community think twice about doing that next year. So just a thought off the top of my head. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Sandra. And then with no other hands from council members or from members of the community, and then City Clerk can correct me. I also want to add what my colleagues have said and to, to both chiefs and the staff and the team that went out, not only in inspections and the education and the enforcement. Two tickets were issued, memory is going to say on June twenty-sixth at 1:24 a.m. So it was starting earlier to try to have that pre-enforcement. And of course, I can tell you personally that in speaking to electeds or mayors from Daly City, South City, San Mateo, Belmont, they also experienced challenges with the illegals from prior to June twenty-eighth, which was the first time Safe and Same were allowed to be sold in San Bruno. And I did speak to Pacifica, they experienced, they do Safe and Same. But all communities seem to be having this challenge and this increase to that. So I just want to thank you both again and it is, it is something. Thanks to the sale of the fireworks, we're allowed to have additional staffing. The debate of whether we should have it Safe and Same or not, but that staffing allows us to do these things and have that enforcement where in other communities as I've heard, it's regular staffing for the most part. And so they can't gouge it at some point. They just try to keep it contained. So, and it is, as other of my colleagues have said, it is giving up of your time and from your family and friends and loved ones. And so thank you and please convey back to your departments. And that means Public Works, that means community service, that means all those folks who made a difference and who were there on the Fourth of July for the residents of San Bruno. So thank you. All right, now we will move on to item C. We're going to be presenting a, oh, we'll call it an acknowledgement and appreciation, a proclamation, a recognition to a retiring Battalion Chief, Mike Kennedy. Mike Kennedy, who is here, when I say here, he's not here physically, he's in the EOC. Can we bring that screen up, please? There he is. And abiding by all rules, as you can see, right? So what I wanted to say to our Battalion Chief, he looks a little more relaxed because he is, he is retired at this point. Mr. Kennedy is going to be departing the great state of California for another venture in life, another chapter. And so he leaves very shortly. So this was an opportunity with COVID when he had his retirement and did that. Obviously, there was not an opportunity to acknowledge or say thank you in any capacity. And this is it because in a couple of weeks, he's, he's gone, shall we say. With Battalion Chief Kennedy, I've known for some years and he's been with our department and working for the residents of San Bruno for twenty-six years. He's been a firefighter, a mechanic, a captain, a Battalion Chief. He also was asked in a transition between the retiring Chief Presta and the bringing on of Chief Delay to step in and be the interim Fire Chief, well as to help already get up to speed and find out where he could find everything and come over to City Hall. You know, there's a side of Mike, now that you're not a Battalion Chief, I can say first names, Mike, that to know him is quite a bit. And he has a mask on today, but he is not a shy man. He is not a quiet man, but he does like to have fun. He likes to dish it out and have fun, but also a character trait of his is he's able to kind of take the fun when it comes back to him. And not everybody can do it both ways, but he has that knack. Based on his large family, he's tried to bring family element, laughter, and tried to make it a little more enjoyable. But he also has done a lot of serious stuff. The two apparatus over at fifty-one, the truck and the engine, are through him facilitating that. And that was, I remember, he's very proud, of the eighty thousand dollars it saved to purchase those two apparatuses at the same time. And to know that he knows when to do stuff, he had former Mayor Jim Ruhane sign the final P.O. as the mayor had initiated the acceptance of these two, which I thought was just timing of Mike to make sure that he had everything taken care of and had the mayor sign it so there should be no questions. It also was tradition unbeknownst to me that truck was actually pushed in to the station. And that is a tradition that goes back to when it's horse and carriage. Well, it's been a long time since there and so to keep tradition, they did push that apparatus into the bay to welcome it to Station Fifty-One and into San Bruno. And another, you know, Mike has been here through a lot of situations that we've had in the city. Two thousand and ten, the explosion, of course you were here. I remember, because it's a very sobering moment, when you and I, former Mayor Ruhane and a couple firefighters attended the first funeral service for two of the victims that were killed. And that is a sobering thing when you have to stand in front of a church and as asked and greet the deceased, the caskets and the family. And I truly know from being with you in many occasions that you have a deep devotion and a deep dedication to this city and to this department and to its community. I also know there's a side of you that for those that may not know, since Mike's been retired, he's come back to help the city in interviews twice, which is very noble and we appreciate that. One in a Sears sucker suit with a bow tie, I guess getting ready for his new adventure. And also the best one was the kilt that he wore to interviews for potential promotional here in our department. So, Mr. Kennedy, may I say on behalf of the council, on behalf of myself, on behalf of a truly appreciative community and its residents, you have never in my mind, in the years that you've been here that I've known you, never once have I ever questioned or doubted your character, your frankness and your passion for anything more than what it is, a true deep commitment to the Fire Department, to this community and its residents. So I personally wish you all the best and safe travels to your new home and the next chapter in your life. Mr. Kennedy, would you like to say anything?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Council and City Manager Rogan. I appreciate this greatly. I've always known what an honor and a privilege it has been to work for the city of San Bruno. It's been the greatest job that I've ever had. I was able to do it for twenty-six years and I loved almost every minute of it. There was some times, but it's been a great job. I've had the pleasure of working with the best firefighters in the county. I'm leaving at such a difficult time in the city's history and it gives me some solace that the Chief Delay is here. He's done such a fantastic job in a way it's been humbling to watch the job that he does. I've never seen the Fire Department in a better position and better shape with the best-trained people and the best demeanor and desire to, to work for this city and do the best job that they can. It's just a great, great group of people. You're very lucky to have them. I'm going to miss all of them. I won't miss waking up in the middle of the night thinking about the next call that comes in. I've already slept better. I have not shaved since I retired. I've never been able to have a beard for the last twenty-six years, so that's interesting. But I wish everyone the best of luck. Thank you very much. It's been my pleasure. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you again, Battalion Chief. And Mike, best wishes and I know you'll enjoy it and maybe you'll send an invitation to us if we're out that way.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Hey, Mike, I just wanted to say thank you to your family too because as we know, your dedication, it takes a lot and it's not just you and you affect everybody else. So thank you to everybody and thank you for your dedication.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you again, Mike. And we're going to move on to item D, receive update on COVID-19 response efforts. And we are going to have, oh, I'm sorry. Jennifer, we are going to hear from Jennifer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we will have our Assistant to the City Manager Jennifer Deanos, who has done an amazing job leading.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, City Manager, I haven't got there yet. So we have two Jennifers now, so we've got to do that differential. So this is Jennifer D., who likes to be in the background, but truly is upfront when she's done a lot of this stuff. So the City Manager felt appropriate and I certainly concur to have Jennifer give this because her and the PIO team have been working so close with it. Now City Manager.
All right, so thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the public. As the mayor said, Jennifer Deanos, our Assistant to the City Manager, will give tonight's presentation. I will back her up with questions. And Jennifer has been leading our public information team for the Emergency Operations Center. So all of the wonderful social media posts and information that has been pushed out to the, to the community really has been led by Jennifer. So she is an amazing resource to give this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Javon. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Member of the State Council. My name is Jennifer Deanos and I serve the community as the Assistant to the City Manager. And I'm here this evening representing the COVID-19 Public Information Team to provide you a brief update on COVID-19. On the screen in front of you, you will see the agenda for the presentation this evening. I will briefly go over the countywide and local COVID-19 statistics, review the statewide order that was issued yesterday by Governor Gavin Newsom, review local restrictions that the city imposed on park and recreation facilities, an overview of local free testing sites, review a few resources available to the public and I'll mention a few reminders at the close of the presentation. I'll start with the county statistics. As you likely know, there are several different means of data available to the general public. For these updates, we have consistently used data from San Mateo County. As of yesterday, the county reports, July thirteenth, the county listed four thousand one hundred sixty-eight positive COVID-19 cases countywide in a total of one hundred and fourteen deaths in our county. In San Bruno, there are a total of one hundred eighty-two positive COVID cases as of July ninth. This is an increase from the previous report to you of one hundred and twenty-five cases at the last City Council meeting. City-specific cases are reported on a weekly basis. An additional countywide statistics are available on the county's website at smcgov.org. Since June seventeen, San Mateo County has remained aligned with the state's resilience roadmap to recovery and in early stage two of the roadmap. You may have heard recently that there is a monitoring list, which includes counties that are aligned with the state. However, their statistics are being closely monitored by the state. San Mateo County is not on that list currently and therefore remains in line with limited restrictions as allowed on the roadmap. However, it's important to note that businesses are required to maintain social distancing and safety plan protocol. Face coverings and social distancing requirements remain in effect while in the public. Given the recent uptick in positive cases, Governor Newsom ordered the closure of several indoor operations on Monday, July third, just yesterday, in an effort to limit the spread of COVID-19. This change was made effective immediately and included the closure of dine-in restaurants, wineries and tasting rooms, movie theaters, family entertainment centers, zoos and museums, card rooms and bars, with bars being both indoor and outdoor operations. There are additional restrictions for the counties that are on the monitoring list. However, as I mentioned earlier, San Mateo County is not on that list. Those additional restrictions include hair salons, barber shops, nail salons, indoor malls, gyms and other businesses. These businesses can remain open in San Mateo County. As highlighted on this slide, San Mateo County Health Officer Dr. Scott Morrow emphasizes the need for us to do our part in a county press release that was issued on Monday, where he states, quote, "Governor Newsom's measures further emphasize the need for all of us to do our part in stopping the spread of COVID-19. That means we're in a face covering, maintaining social distancing and limiting our activities. It's up to us to determine our future," end quote. The city's PIO team quickly set up a small team to go out to our business community to talk to those that are affected by these recent changes. This engagement effort is helpful to increase information and communication. We use it as an opportunity to reiterate that outdoor dining remains an option in San Bruno. The implemented outdoor dining program was established to provide options for outdoor use to those restaurants that are interested in temporary seating for customers on their private property and/or waive the fees for encroachment permits for seating in public areas. I'll knock over the program requirements this evening in detail as it was previously presented to the City Council. However, business owners that are interested in outdoor dining should be referred to our Building Division or Public Works Department for information. The numbers are on the screen and will be posted to the city's website in this presentation as well as on the homepage at sanbruno.ca.gov. Simultaneously, the city is working to balance our residents' needs for recreation and exercise and the precautions and facility closures. Over the last week, the San Bruno Community Services Department has seen a steady increase in requests from the public to reopen park amenities. At this time, there are some modifications and ease of restrictions that have been authorized effective tomorrow, Wednesday, July fifteenth, with social distancing and face covering requirements remaining in effect. Appropriate signage and sanitation schedules will be closely monitored by city staff. The first is the reopening of the dog park located on Commodore Drive. Most public restrooms will reopen. That includes four out of five of our public restrooms being at Lions Field, Brandy Park, Commodore Park, the lower portion of City Park. The restrooms located in the upper portion of City Park will remain closed at this time. Tennis courts will reopen at City Park. They will be restricted to same household play and made available on a first-come, first-served basis. That stands the same for basketball courts, which are at Bay Shore Circle, Catawba Park, Earl Glenview Park, Forest Lane Park, Brandy and Pacific Heights Park, also restricted to same day, excuse me, same household play. Baseball, softball, soccer fields are accessible to the public, however group and any type of team play are prohibited and again restricted to same household play. It is important to note that all other closures remain in effect, including group or team play on athletic fields, play structures, picnic sites, drinking fountains and indoor recreation facilities. These closures are reassessed each week. Over the next few slides, I'll briefly go over resources that are available to our community and I'll start with free COVID-19 testing here in San Bruno. There were two recent testing sites in our community held on July first and July eighth, where over five hundred locals were tested on each of the two testing dates. There are two additional testing dates currently available in San Bruno, those being July twenty-ninth and August fifth at nine seven five, week length. Registration fills quickly and in case one does not get to register for San Bruno, there are several other testing sites in neighboring agencies as listed here on the slide. The schedule does vary from week to week and so it's important to visit the website to see when and where the testing will be held. But in order to test, residents are required to register and can do so at projectbaseline.com/covid19 or by visiting the county website on this slide, which offers a link to the registration. The next resource I will highlight this evening is the Small Business Assistance and Recovery Program. This program is offered to local small businesses and offers a wide variety of training and online tools to work through the recovery process and aftermath of COVID-19 economic impacts to small businesses. The program includes opportunities to meet with businesses and marketing, excuse me, business and marketing experts, receive one-on-one business advising and an introduction to online tools and resources, all in an effort to assist with reopening and business strategies. At this time, there are over forty businesses that have applied to participate in this program and this is above and beyond the other resources and grant funding opportunities that are available through San Mateo County Strong and Samhita. This program is offered through the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center located on San Mateo Avenue. And as you can see by the sponsors of the program listed at the bottom of the slide, this is truly a community effort to support our local businesses. I would like to mention that we are also joined this evening by our community partner, Saida Shroud, who represents the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce, Skyline College and Bay Area Entrepreneur Center. Saida and her team have served as a great resource in disseminating information to our business community and both Saida and I are happy to answer any questions about this program that you may have at the end of the presentation. Next is an opportunity through the county that is available to residents who are impacted economically by COVID-19 and are not eligible for state or federal assistance due to immigration status. This resource is available through San Mateo County Immigrant Relief Fund. The fund was a fund was established through a variety of private donors as well as our county's Measure K funds. There are eligibility requirements, um, to participate in the program, and that's being ineligible to receive any stimulus funding from the federal government, uh, an income earned of less than $99,000 or a total household income of $198,000 for the calendar year 2019, and, uh, experience of an income disruption due to COVID-19. The program details and pre-application process are available on the county's website, or you can directly link to the program by accessing the website on this slide. That's missionassetfund.org/immigrant-families-grant. As I near the end of my presentation, I will close out this evening with two reminders. The first reminder being, uh, to help hold the line and prevent the spread of COVID-19. Please remember to wear your face covering and social distance and do your part to limit the spike of COVID-19 for our community, our neighbors, friends, our families, and just for one another. And lastly, please stay connected with all of our latest news by following the city of San Bruno on social media. Um, information is posted to Nextdoor, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, as well as this presentation being posted to our city website. And with that, that concludes my update for this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Is Saeda gonna speak?
Saeda is available for questions if there are any questions related to, um, any of the business community, um, programs that are available.
Perfect. Um, Councilmember Mason.
Hey, um, I just wanted to start by thanking Jennifer. I think since the COVID, um, started, she's been, uh, pretty solid to the, to, I guess, everybody, um, as a go-to. Um, and I just have a couple of questions. So, my first question is the San Mateo County Strong Fund, the money that the community foundation provided, um, do we have any idea of whether that money has been, uh, distributed and to who it's been distributed?
Yes, we do, uh, city council, uh, and so we can provide that information. All of the money, um, that has been allocated, uh, to the city of San Bruno has been issued to San Bruno businesses, and the San Bruno Community Foundation sent a communication to the city council and board members with that information. Uh, so I, I can find that and report that all.
Okay, that would be great.
They're currently working on a, a plan to, um, make that, um, have a public announcement of that.
Oh, that would be great. I don't, okay, and I'll find it in my email. I, I did see one email that had three businesses that came from the, um, SMC Strong, but I didn't see the one for the additional funds from the community foundation. So I, I can look again. Um, my other question is, um, specifically for Saeda. Thank you, Saeda. I've seen the, all the posts on social media. I'm just curious what, uh, which ones of the training programs that you've received the most, um, the most attraction from or the most interest in from our local businesses? Actually, I don't know if she's on. Oh, there you go.
Ms. Shroud.
Hello, thank you for that question, uh, Councilwoman Mason. And thank you, Jennifer, for talking about the program. Um, you did an excellent job. You said everything, really. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Um, so Linda, to answer your question, the workshops have been the biggest draw for, um, participation in this particular program. And I, I think it's such a great question because we realized about two and a half weeks ago that we, we ourselves needed to adjust our strategy, um, and make the one-on-one assistance, um, not secondary, but really have it follow the broader workshops because those are being attended, um, in larger numbers. And I think they just have a broader reach and a better reach than, than business owners that don't have time already, um, expecting them to make time for a one-on-one, uh, strategy session. While we do believe they are very helpful, I just, we just realized that we needed to switch things up. So, we've switched to more of a workshop, um, tutorial, webinar, strategy for this program. So, you don't see them yet, but, um, as everyone engages on social media, we will be sharing, um, all of the workshops that we have rolling out, um, which include an introductory workshop, just explaining a little bit more about, um, kind of dialing it back a little bit to explain what this program is and how it really can benefit, um, some of the small business owners.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Of course.
Um, I just, and I wanted to thank you because I love, I, I think it was a partnership between you and the city, but on social media, as you posted, businesses that were opening to highlight that they're back in business. That's how I would know that they were open if I didn't drive by, and I just want to express my, uh, appreciation for that. That was really nice. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And it truly was a partnership. It really was the city, um, and it, with our assistance and just reaching out to businesses and with the chamber. So everyone's been just really awesome and, and working together, um, to, to do whatever we can.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
Any other, uh, questions, um, or comments from council? Okay. Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and, uh, thank, uh, Saeda and of course, thank Jennifer, uh, for their efforts and their work and the report. Thank you and Saeda, have a good evening.
Good night.
You're not staying? Okay, thanks. Uh, we'll go ahead and then, uh, on item E, the regular city council meeting for August 11th, 2020 is canceled, which is the normal process that we have had, uh, that we have the second meeting in August. So the August 11th meeting will be canceled and then we'll convene later in the month. Moving on to item five, uh, consent calendar. Uh, all items are considered routine or implementation and from earlier council action and may be enacted on one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Um, uh, there's three things that I have. Um, one is, I, I would like to ask just for a comment or staff to give a little more information, don't need it pulled for a separate vote, on item E and D, I'm sorry, E and F, apologize, E and F. Um, and then for Michael, uh, the vice mayor, I know on item D, we're gonna have to take that separate, um, because it, uh, he's recused from that and so we'll have to go through that process. So, um, is there anybody else who wants to, to pull or add anything? Okay. Uh, Councilman Mason?
Yeah, I just have, um, a question about A and B. I don't think it has to be pulled. I just have a question.
Beautiful.
And then, um, and then just, uh, just some questions about, uh, F, because D, D's gonna be pulled separately anyway, so.
Yeah, we need to. Okay, so, uh, with hearing that none, uh, we'll go, first gonna go to item A for a question from Councilmember Mason, except accounts payable of June 22nd, 29th, and July 6th.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's, yeah, so my question, actually, I'm sorry, it's just A, uh, just A and F, not B. Um, so my question is just if we could get a little bit of clarification on why the plumbing costs were about $50,000. Um, I looked through this and we're using, it looks like one, two, three, four plumbing companies in my notes, and it's, these are in the months of, um, these are in the months that we've been in shelter in place, um, and facilities have been closed, and we're just in such a deficit. I, I'm not understanding why the cost is so high.
Sure, we can research that and provide, uh, the council with additional details on those particular expenditures, uh, in the rationale and the contract.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. Um, and so that was my question regarding A.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll move on to item E, which is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to, to execute all restricted grant agreements and any amendments hereon two with the California Department of Transportation for the development of a San Bruno Safe Route to School Plan. And it's just to provide a little information not to go into great detail.
Sure, so, um, Public Works Director Jimmy Tan is on the line, so I will ask for him to be, uh, brought in the room, uh, and I will give a, uh, quick, um, uh, he's here. So I will not do that. I'll let him do it.
Yes, I am here, actually. Sorry about that. I was in the other waiting room. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Public Works Director Jimmy Tan. Um, regards to this, uh, safe, uh, route to school, uh, plan, uh, back in October 2019, the city submitted an application to Caltrans, uh, requesting about $250,000 in grant funding, uh, through the Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant to develop this plan. And, uh, this plan is to help, you know, identify measures, you know, to support the community for safe, you know, walking and biking for all the students and their families around the neighborhood. So, some of the recommendations that we will be looking at, uh, you know, as part of the plan, includes like traffic calming measures and improvements to pedestrian and infrastructures, and, uh, will also be getting, having a, a technical advisory committee, um, on board with stakeholders, you know, from schools and as well as the community to develop this, uh, plan. So, right now, again, you know, it's, it's great. It was a competitive grant application. You know, it's, it's great that the city was able to get this, um, about a quarter of a million dollars in funding of, to develop this, and that we're anticipating this plan to start sometime in, in fall of 2020. And there is a matching of, of fund that's required, about a little over 11% matching, so about $32,000 worth, which will be coming out of, uh, Measure A funds.
Okay, um, thank you. Anybody, uh, Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you. Thank you and congratulations. Uh, that's, that's a nice hall. Um, does, does this, uh, grant have anything to do with how, um, staff were out at Bel Air and met, met with the safe, uh, the school, uh, program, uh, people, personnel out there?
Correct, that's, that's part of it. I, I think this, this will actually not only look at the Bel Air school, but will be looking at other, other schools within the, uh, community as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good work.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, but...
Councilmember Mason, sorry. I apologize. Looking at the other screen.
Just a quick question. What, when does the, I may have just missed it. When does the grant expire?
I believe it's 2023.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have the exact date, but the year is 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, uh, thank you, Director Tan, for, for your, uh, your time. Uh, we're gonna move on to item F, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the California Conservation Corps, known as the CCC, for defensible space clearance and fire mitigation activities in Crestmore Canyon in the amount of $608,024, subject to court approval. And, uh, city manager?
All right, as we bring in the fire chief, uh, the council will remember, uh, in November of 2019, we were successful in converting the remaining community service hours that PGE, uh, needed to perform, uh, to a financial contribution in the amount of $3 million to fund a Crestmore Canyon fire mitigation project. Uh, that $3 million has been deposited with the court as a trustee, uh, and we are in the process of both developing a plan to submit to the court for the full expenditure of those funds, as well as conducting the sequel analysis for that project. Uh, what is before you is a agreement, uh, with the California Conservation Corps to expend $600,000 of funds, uh, for direct fire mitigation in the county, uh, in the canyon that will ultimately be paid for by that $3 million. So with that, uh, I've asked the fire chief to give, uh, a more detailed explanation, and I believe he has a PowerPoint ready to go.
Chief delay.
Okay, give me just one moment here. Just wanna share my screen here. Okay, can everybody see my screen all right? Great. Uh, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, already delay your fire chief. Um, I'm here to give you a brief update on the Crestmore Canyon, uh, wildfire mitigation project as, uh, our city manager has alluded to. Um, on the phone, I do have available for us Janet Woganuth, uh, uh, for the California Conservation Corps, who's the conservation supervisor as well, in case we have any follow-up questions with her, but I'll move through the presentation here this evening and give you that brief update. So our objective tonight is to receive an update on the mitigation project itself and then, uh, eventually adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement with the California Conservation Corps to provide that defensible space clearance and fire mitigation activities in Crestmore Canyon in the amount of $608,024, again, subject to court approval. Uh, some, uh, the agenda, uh, is also to provide some background on Crestmore Canyon itself. Um, talk about some of the recent actions that we've taken to mitigate and address, uh, the wildfire, uh, issues in Crestmore Canyon itself. Um, talk about the California Conservation Corps' contract, and then talk about the request to Judge Alcep in regards to the, uh, Conservation Corps, and then ultimately hopefully take action by the city council, and then, uh, provide any, uh, questions, uh, you know, for you this evening as well. So, if you can see before you, uh, this is Crestmore Canyon. It's kind of, uh, you know, a, um, a, uh, a wild, uh, portion of the community which has a significant amount of vegetation in it. And, uh, over the years, this large open space, uh, totaling 76.6 acres, uh, area that contains some native species, most moderate, and mostly native, uh, trees. Um, in close proximity, um, uh, to our, uh, roadways throughout, uh, San Bruno, uh, right adjacent Sneeve Lane on the north, uh, Highway 35 to the west, and San Bruno Avenue to the south, and 280, uh, to the east. Two different neighborhoods surround Crestmore Canyon, Bonwood and Crestmore Neighborhoods, and the Crestmore Canyon itself is a quarter mile to the west, the open space, excuse me, of Sweeney Ridge, uh, which is a federal responsibility area in the National Park Service and Golden Gate National Record. The Crestmore Canyon is specifically unique, uh, obviously to the city of San Bruno. It was, uh, directly adjacent to the San Bruno gas pipeline explosion, and, uh, an important, uh, piece of that, uh, emergency that took place was the Fred, spread of the fire into Crestmore Canyon, the evening of the fire itself. So some recent actions that we've taken, uh, to mitigate and address some of the fire concerns within Crestmore Canyon. Uh, back in 2018 and 2019 fiscal year, we received a grant for $15,000 from the California Fire Foundation to conduct some brush clearing and improve access into Crestmore Canyon and the fire road that comes off of Engvall. That work was completed, uh, back in 1819 fiscal years. Most recently, in 2019, the city council, uh, approved $37,000 for, uh, a wildfire risk assessment, um, plan that was called, it's called No Harm, and that identifies some of the most, uh, hazardous, um, areas within the city and their hazard, and it stratifies the risk, uh, for the city. Um, and Crestmore Canyon was on the more high hazard, uh, side of things, um, along with some other areas that were identified within the city of San Bruno. 2019, 20, again, we, uh, also approved, uh, $75,000 for vegetation management and fire mitigation in Crestmore Canyon. That work was approved and initiated. Uh, we've worked to establish, uh, this Crestmore Canyon wildfire mitigation plan, the initial steps for that plan and that project. Um, working with community and economic development and, uh, the mapping contractor, we developed a map that reflects a 30-foot and 100-foot clearance, uh, behind the residents, uh, in Crestmore Canyon to really identify that defensible space that's necessary to take place, uh, in that mitigation work. We've obtained some preliminary cost estimates from CAL FIRE and other contractors to do mitigation work in the canyon to help identify where the priorities will be, uh, within the, the plan. Excuse me, just a second here. Um, and we worked to develop a, a general scope of work that more clearly defines, uh, the cost estimates for work in the canyon. And then we're working to develop an estimate for ongoing maintenance of the canyon and create some budget strategies for annual funding for the, the project work. Uh, we've most recently hired a consultant and project manager to, to develop the actual Crestmore Canyon wildfire mitigation plan. Uh, this plan will kind of go on concurrently in the background while we do some of this work with the California Conservation Corps, um, and these are some initial steps with the California Conservation Corps that we can use to, to get some boots on the ground in the canyon and actually provide some really, uh, immediate remedies to the, the residents there and provide some fire safety. And the last piece again is our And the last piece, again, is our to-dos, and that's to develop this contract with California Conservation Corps itself. If you look at the screen there, you'll see Crestmore Canyon and those identified zones. There's two different buffers. That 30-foot buffer is in pink along the edge directly behind the residences, and the green zone there is that 100-foot buffer behind the residents as well. And the idea and the concept is to take the contract with the three Cs and actually perform that handwork behind the structures to provide that 100-foot defensible space to protect them should a wildfire break out in Crestmore Canyon. So the request to Judge Alsop, should the council approve the request for funding for the California Conservation Corps work, this request for approval would be requested through the courts to be able to provide direct boots on the ground and spent only on vegetation management and fire mitigation that directly benefits our San Bruno residents and not on consultants or any regulatory approvals and needs for the project. And that was specific direction given by Judge Alsop in regards to the dollars that are coming from PG&E for fire mitigation in Crestmore Canyon. And then the final is the request to action from the City Council to adopt a resolution to have the City Manager execute the contract with the three Cs in the amount shown. And we opened it up for any questions from the council in regards to the project.
Thank you, Chief, for the report and information. Councilmember Mason?
Hey, thanks for the report. I just had a question around the actual, if it would be possible as part of the project to put a trailhead at the very beginning of the trail?
Yeah, so, Members of the council, so the plan, this particular work is to be done kind of basically in the background while we're developing the larger plan and the environmental studies that are required for the entire project. And that is, you know, definitely part of the scope of this wildfire mitigation plan is to get some community engagement, find out what the needs of the city, the Parks Department, and the community are to try to blend those things together and provide the best solution while providing this wildfire mitigation and protection work at the same time.
Okay, thanks. And then is the contract, there's no contract in the packet, so is the contract, have negotiations started, or where are you with that?
Yeah, the California Conservation Corps is specifically excluded from requirements of competitive bidding by the nature of their organization and state law. And they actually come at a significantly reduced rate in a competitive bidding process. They actually, the rate is about $24 an hour, fully burdened for each hour, including supervision. So it's a great opportunity for us to get a low-cost labor for some great work that needs to get done in the canyon and provide some, a unique opportunity for youths to get job skills and promote their careers at an early age.
So my last comment was gonna be that I am familiar with the group, and I think it's great that the city of San Bruno is partnering up for this project. But the earlier question was just whether there's already a contract in place. Is there, are we using a template contract that they have? How, where is that contract?
So we have a sponsor agreement, just as we will be a sponsor for their organization, and then there's a contract that is prepared and ready for the council to be able to approve with the City Manager's office.
Yeah, Councilmember Mason, I can toss that to the City Council, but our routine process is not to attach the contracts and send those to the City Council. The City Council authorizes the City Manager and the organization to execute. And so sometimes they are generated, at other times they are not. By the time they actually happen, at this time, we can have a contract for this one project.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the report. Just wanted a little bit more clarity on when the council approved the $75,000 back in last year, those funds are being used to hire the consultant to put together the plan? Is that correct?
There's two different buckets of money totaling $125,000 for fire mitigation. Very first portion actually was an initial contract with the California Conservation Corps to start even prior to this larger contract. Now, just bring to your attention, it's not in the packet, but this contract is actually a five-year contract, and the first year provides the bulk of the work to occur, and then four additional years that are included in this contract that would provide a certain timeframe for them to be out there to what we call spike out. And spiking out is probably the most productive way we can actually utilize their services, where they'll actually camp on-site for eight days at a time, providing 10 hours of work per day, so they don't use the travel time. Their base is out of Watsonville, so if we had them drive back and forth every day, a lot of time would be lost actually doing the drive. So we have them spike out on-site for eight days at a time.
Okay, but the $75,000 that we authorize, has that been spent yet then?
Yeah.
City Manager?
Yeah, let me apply on that. So there are two pots of money for work in the canyon that the City Council has authorized. One is approximately $7,000 that has routinely been a part of the annual operating budget that is spent on fire mitigation. That, as we know, has not been sufficient to do all the fire mitigation work. In addition, once we were developing a project to be approved by the court and funded by PG&E, the City Council took an action to allocate, I believe it was either $125,000 or $175,000 that went to a capital improvement project. That money is the money that will pay for the consultant. And remember, what we heard from the judge is that they did not want the $3 million to be used for consultants and temporary work. They really wanted that $3 million to be exclusively used for, as the judge said, boots on the ground doing the work. And the City Council did allocate money to the capital improvement project for all of the beginning work and the SEQA filing. And you're absolutely right in remembering that, that's not the $75,000 that we're talking about that will be spent on this year on working to clear that defensible space area.
Okay, I'm more clear on that. Thank you. So as for when this work will start, are we gonna wait for the environmental work to be all completed, or is there enough work for them to start before that?
Chief Delay?
Yes, so there's two different components. There's some work that's gonna be initiated on the 22nd of this month that is separate from this particular contract, and that work would be done under a SEQA exemption that's already been filed on behalf of the city. There's a specific exemption for 100-foot defensible space within the law that allows us to get that accomplished under that SEQA exemption. So that work initially is gonna start then, and if approved, this contract would follow suit directly after those hours are utilized that have initially been appropriated.
Okay, and my last question is, in notifying the residents that are adjacent to the canyon and it being on the city's website, how are we gonna let people know what's happening? Because a number of residents have been waiting for a while to have something bigger done, and I just wanted to make sure that they are being updated, and how will they be informed?
Sure, so, Councilmember...
City Manager?
We will develop a plan to notice all of the residents at the appropriate time as we're working behind their house. And so we won't do a blanket notification because it will sort of take time for them to work their way, but we will do a direct notification to the individual homeowners. And that's a normal part of our process, and that will certainly be done here.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? If seen none, I just wanted to thank the Fire Chief first. I think it was day two when you started. You had to go see Judge Alsop in San Francisco, and I've had to stand before him, well, been there twice, stood before him once, and that's a lot to be thrown into, I can tell you, with the judge. And you think to my colleagues too, one of the things he was emphatic about, the judge, when I stood there on the second occasion before him, was that the consultants in his world was not where these money should go, where we took the probation hours that I don't believe, and I think most of my colleagues believe, was not being expended correctly or to benefit San Bruno, but instead that it really showed significant difference, and that's why the Fire Chief and staff have been making those moves and making progress from what they've been doing and what they are going to do. So when going back before the judge, it shows good faith and we kept our commitment. And again, I want to remind that, you know, I did some of the families of those who lost loved ones, and, you know, they were in favor of this and felt also it was something that was well worth it to protect the neighborhood and the surrounding folks. So anyway, want to thank the Chief for that, and I'm being told there's a member of... Okay, there was, but now there's not. Okay, so there was somebody there, and they dropped off as far as for the speaking.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here.
Oh, Janet is from CCC, and Janet, welcome.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Chief Delay, Mayor, council members, and staff for having me join today. We're super excited to start working on this project. As you know, California is really being impacted with heavy fuel loads right now and, of course, increased fire hazards and dangers. And in talking with Chief Delay, we've been doing a lot of similar projects like what we're going to be doing there in the canyon for the city of Santa Cruz, doing very similar work, doing a fuel reduction in both a high density of homes as well as in their public park areas where they're having, unfortunately, homeless encampments, a lot of fires. So we are super excited to be doing it, having the crews out there. I also want to invite all the council members, and of course, the mayor, come out, see the crews at work, talk to them. They love having you folks out to really show your appreciation for the work that they're doing, and these are young folks that are making a huge difference in California for all of us.
Thank you for saying that. Thank you for being here and waiting to offer that, and we appreciate it. And it is a good group, and I'm glad that they're gonna be a part of our community and making a difference. Thank you. Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, just a quick question now that Janet is here. Is there opportunities for San Bruno youth to join up with you guys?
So the California Conservation Corps hires year-round, so there's never any downtime for us, like during the winter months or anything like that. We hire year-round. All youth have to be 18 to 25 to join our program. Obviously, a California resident, they do a whole background. Like Chief Delay was saying, our office, our closest office to you, obviously, is in Watsonville. It's a little bit of a trek, but we do have other locations throughout the state of California that will provide them housing, so if they choose to leave the area, get a good start at a different location, there are those opportunities. Right now, we have seven residential locations throughout the state. Several of them are firefighter locations where they can actually become firefighters. And as I'm sure everybody's aware, the governor has just given CAL FIRE more opportunities to hire, and part of that package is including us, so we are looking for more young people to join, especially those who are interested in firefighting. So if you do have folks, we ask them to obviously go to our website. And the other part of this is too, is those young people can earn not only a monthly stipend, but they can earn scholarships to go back to school on. If they really work at it and they pull a couple of years with us, they can walk out with about $14,000 in scholarship money.
Great, thank you.
Great, and so thank you for that information, and I believe from our fire that they may be going out also at some point with the crew and teaching and educating them and teaching them some first aid and CPR, et cetera. So thank you. Sounds like a great program.
Thank you for having me.
No, thank you for your patience. Thank you for being here. Thank you for what you're doing. Okay, are there any other questions on that? If not, we have Items A, B, C, E, and F that we can take in one action, and D, we're gonna have to do separate. Is there any action from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, hold on. I'm sorry. Yes, City Manager?
Before you take an action, I do have an answer to Councilmember Mason's question about the plumbing contractors. So we've been able to research that, and I would like to provide a quick answer. Those three companies do not represent work that was done on behalf of the city. What it represents is when a plumbing contractor, any contractor, applies for an encroachment permit upon city property, they have to issue the city a performance bond, and this is the refund of that money. And so what you're seeing is our check register, which is essentially our positive pay file from the bank, and any check we write, whether it's actually payment invoice or refunding money, shows up here, and that's exactly what that is. So it is not work that was done on behalf of the city. It is the refund.
Thank you. And if there's any way to identify that, I think in the future, that would be helpful, because when you look at it, there's five companies I'm looking at right now, and it does look like we're spending a lot on plumbing. So if possible, to put in front of it, we'd like bond reimbursement. I don't know, but I'm just throwing that out there.
And that bond could go for plumbing and other elements that are coming in for an encroachment. There's X number of dollars, and then you, once completed, and the city sees it, they get a check mailed to them. Okay, so we're back to Items A, B, C, E, and F. Do I have action from council on consent?
Through the chair?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to throw out a comment that the things that are on consent generally don't require this much discussion, and I was just kind of watching the clock, and I know that there's interest in some of these things. I know individual check items have, it's generally been our practice to ask those things prior in an email so that staff does have time to respond to those. It generally don't need to occupy a lot of our meeting time. And so I just wanted to suggest to my colleagues that if they do have specific questions like that, that don't really require a lot of discussion among the council, that they consider sending those in ahead of time and get your answers offline so that we don't spend a lot of our meeting time and the public's time in discussing a lot of these things. That's really the intent of the consent calendar. And, you know, if there are things that need to be taken off consent, then, you know, luckily, the Fire Chief did have a presentation ready for that one, but for the most part, these items don't have a lot of documentation behind them, and so staff is generally not ready to present on these. I just wanted to put that out there, just sort of as advice to our newest council members. It's kind of been the practice in the past to do some of those things offline, so just a suggestion and a recommendation going forward. And with that, I will make a motion to approve all but Item D on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. All right, now we're gonna move to Item D, and this is an item that Mr. Salazar, do you want to say why you're recused, or so at least it comes from you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so I do live half a block away from the property in question, and so I will be recusing myself from this particular approval, although it's gone through. This is the second action required on these, and so I will be muting myself and turning off my camera while the rest of my colleagues proceed with this action, and then I will return once that is done. Thank you.
And I think the question to legal counsel is, and our city clerk, is should we remove the Vice Mayor from the screen altogether?
Yes, I've just moved him to the attentive part of the meeting.
That button, you hit that button quick. Okay, so let's move on to Item D. There are, because we've had to pull it like this, there are gonna be four actions that are required within this. First, we have waive the second reading, and then we need to adopt the ordinance pending the section Title 12 of the Land Use of the San Bruno Municipal Code to change the zoning map from the commercial to the PD, and that's the first action. So we'll also have a second action, because we have an ordinance approving the development agreement. That also will require waiving the second reading with a second and a roll call. So there's gonna be four actions, to my understanding, unless I'm incorrect, for this. We can't take it all... It, it, we can't take it all at once, unfortunately.
Oh.
I know.
We can't?
Uh, that's what, no. Well, because we pulled, we've pulled it for a separate vote. Because we have to. So, uh, our four actions, uh, the first one is waive, waiving the second reading. Uh, do we have a motion and a second?
Um, hold on, I had a question. It's on at page 39. I just want to make sure I'm on the right resolution, sorry, Mayor Medina.
That's okay.
Before we vote, it's, um, page 39, it's attachment to, to... Oh, sorry, it's the resolution, um, ordinance number 2020 and ordinance of the city and council, county, county, city council of the city of San Bruno approving a development agreement between the city. I'm trying to see if that's what we're voting on, hold on. I just have it in my notes. So I think, I think it's the first one, but I guess I just want to say that there's a correction, um, there's a reference to the CPI on page 39. Um, and it just refers to the CPI increasing, but the development agreement does say increase or decrease. And so it's, it's just, I just want to make sure that, that our documents are consistent. So if that correction can be noted.
City Attorney?
Thank you, uh, yes, Councilmember Mason. So, uh, we can simply change that, a parenthetical phrase in the whereas clause, the last whereas clause on page 39, to say, "Subjects to annual CPI modifications." And I think that, that should cover it and I think it will be consistent, it doesn't affect the development agreement and I think we should be fine with that. Doesn't need to come back for, for any further action.
Okay, I, I agree, thank you. Um, then I, I just wanted to make sure that the resolutions from, from what I, from my read, they're specific to Mills Park. We're not waiving anything, we're not changing anything to any other space except for the Mills Park development, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. All right, so, uh, first action is we need a motion and a second to waive the second reading.
And, Mr. Mayor, that would be waive the second reading on, uh, the...
First ordinance, amending the section to, uh, 12.96.020, right?
Right.
So do we have a, a move that we waive the first reading, or the second reading, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
So, motion made in second by Medina Medina.
Oh, Medina Medina, okay, thank you.
Medina Medina and, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember, Vice Mayor Salazar recused.
Thank you. Next action would be to, uh, adopt the ordinance amending section 12.96.020 of Title 12 land use of the San Bruno Municipal Code to change the zoning map from the commercial C to the planned development PD district with a development plan for the project based upon the findings for approval in the ordinance, including the SEQA conformity determination. Is there a motion? I'll move the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Medina Medina, motion unseconded, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Davis.
Sorry, writing some notes, uh, sec, uh, sec, uh, yes.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye, now we need...
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Salazar recused.
Thank you. Now there's the, um, waive the second reading and that will be for our second ordinance. Is there a motion and a second to waive the second reading of the second ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, Councilmember Medina, uh, Councilmember, um, Davis, roll call please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye. Next action would be, uh, to adopt the ordinance approving a development agreement and affordable housing plan based upon the findings for the approval in the ordinance, including the SEQA conformity determination for the property at Mills Park Center located primarily at 601 through 799 El Camino Real and the adjacent commercial site at 601 through 611 El Camino Real. Linda, would you like to offer a motion or...
Oh, wait, thank you.
Okay.
So moved.
I'll second. There's been a motion made by this time, uh, reverse the Medina's, uh, Councilmember Marty Medina and Mayor Medina, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Salazar recused.
And since you bring up his name, could you bring him back in and thank you very much, City Clerk? I see, uh, the Vice Mayor has returned, so we'll move on to conduct of business. Uh, adopt, uh, oh, I'm sorry. What's that? With all that reading. Apologize, I'll turn it over to you for conduct of business.
I am working on bringing in Tim Wallace into the room, just one moment.
Uh, if you don't mind, is it okay if I read it?
Um, sure, yeah, that would actually...
Under conduct of business, item 6A, adopt a resolution authorizing the relocation of the memorial recognition sculpture in the city park for an amount not to exceed $43,372 from the city art fund. And, um, there you go. You, you've outdressed us tonight. Um, Mr. Wallace.
I'm going to share my screen here. Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Tim Wallace, I am the Acting Community Services Director. Before you this evening is a resolution authorizing the relocation of the memorial recognition sculpture in the city park. This evening's presentation will include, uh, background and history of the memorial sculpture, why the sculpture needs to be relocated, the process used to determine a new location, uh, the passage of the proposal by two different commissions, the budget for the project and finally, uh, council action. In 2010, based on a recommendation from the Culture and Arts Commission, the city council approved a memorial recognition sculpture. Also in 2010, the council improved, approved a process that established criteria for honoring noteworthy individuals, which includes a minimum of 15 years of significant dedicated service to the community. The sculpture was installed in its current location in City Park in 2012 at a cost of approximately $50,000. Today, the sculpture honors 16 individuals. The current location of the sculpture, west of the recreation center and north of the Rotary Pavilion, is within the footprint of what will be the new Recreation and Aquatic Center. Because of this, the sculpture must be relocated. Since the current recreation building is scheduled to be demolished in early 2021, the sculpture needs to be moved in a timely manner. A subcommittee consisting of two members of the Culture and Arts Commission and two members of the Parks and Recreation Commission was formed and met in October of 2019 to discuss options for relocating the sculpture. Out of this meeting came consensus that the sculpture should be moved to an area in City Park west of the tennis courts and east of picnic area number eight. This area was selected to, due to the high visibility of the location, uh, the tranquility of the area, the fact that it's outside the drip line of any trees, there being plenty of space available for the sculpture and the fact that there are no underground obstructions in the area. Here we see a photo of the proposed new location just outside of the tennis courts in City Park. And here we have an aerial view showing the current location of the sculpture on the left and the proposed new location, um, on the right. Although not a part of this evening's action, it's worth noting that the Rotary Pavilion also falls within the footprint of the new Recreation and Aquatic Center and will be relocated to where the current aquatic center is. In addition, seven cherry blossom trees that were planted in honor of our sister city relationship with NARITA Japan will also be relocated. At its May 21st meeting, the Culture and Arts Commission recommended both the new location in City Park and funding the relocation through the city art fund. The new location was also recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission at its June 17th meeting. The budget for this project is $37,715, which includes all subgrade work, the, uh, construction of a seat wall, a 13-foot diameter asphalt surface, as well as two pathways leading to and from the main City Park pathway. Staff is recommending a 15% contingency for any change orders that may arise, which would bring the maximum amount of the expenditure for the project to $43,372. As of June 30th, the city art fund had a balance of $325,000, $325,965. Staff is recommending council approval of the resolution in an amount not to exceed $43,372 from the city art fund. This concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions from colleagues? Uh, Vice Mayor Salazar.
Thank you. Uh, so, so Tim, um, it's interesting that the, uh, the cost to move this thing is almost the, the cost of the, uh, the sculpture itself. Can you give us a little bit of detail in terms of what, what's involved in moving it? Is there going to be a new concrete pad put in place in the new location? Does this involve bringing cranes in, a disassembly of the, of the sculpture? Is the artist being brought in to consult and then work? How, how does all that play out?
So the artist, uh, was consulted, but, um, that's not the bulk of the cost. The bulk of the cost is the subgrade work that's required, includes quite a bit of, um, rebar installation. Um, that's, that's the biggest cost is, is the, the underground work. And also keep in mind, uh, construction costs have increased tremendously over the past decade and that certainly adds to the cost of the project.
Okay, all right, thank you. And, and since the, um, the commission has, uh, approved the money and they, they, um, basically, uh, understand what, what's involved in, in doing this, so, you know, it, although it does seem like a lot of money, as long as we have their, their blessing to move forward with those funds, I feel a little bit better about doing that. Thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I just, um, the placement, I was on the park and rec commission when the arch was, actually we worked with three different designers and there were some interesting things that were presented. But one of the things about this location was that it gave, um, access to those maybe in a wheelchair, um, or having difficulty walking. Um, you know, there was all sorts of discussions on locations. And then the idea of the seated wall came after actually and, um, I think staff, Public Works actually built that for us. And that was just so that there would be sort of a, a place that they can sort of sit in a remembrance and sort of in the solitude. I just want to make sure there's, um, that, well, the placement of this is sort of near a picnic site, near the tennis courts and near a walking path. So, you know, you, you kind of point it to an area which is pretty large and wide. So I'd say, kind of get it off the path a little ways and, um, but also be able to provide some sort of access to it. If you can use that compressed granite or something like that to have something that somebody can get to it, but not that it's right there next to the road, next to the path and for sound wise. And then also not take up this sort of picnic grassy area too. So it's kind of a, there's, there's several spaces in that area that you can actually place it, but I think too close to the pathway is, um, on the, I guess, south end of the park would not be the best location, but closer tucked in, the trees would be better. Just some thoughts.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mason.
Yeah, um, I guess my, my first question is why is this coming out of the, um, commission, the Arts and Culture Commission and not out of the $50 million budget, um, for the overall park and a, a new facility? Because we just have such a need for art and I just would hate to take it from, um, you know, one bucket when we already have a $50 million budget for the park and rec, for the new build and the new aquatic center as we call it. And this really is a direct impact from that rebuild.
City Manager?
Sure, let me take that. Councilmember Mason, uh, this was, uh, initially envisioned to be funded as a part of that $50 million as well as a number of other site improvements at City Park and other enhancements. But at this point, probably a year and a half ago, as we were looking at the budget for that project, $50 million is a lot of money, but when you're, uh, budgeting costs is about a thousand dollars a square foot, uh, it really doesn't get everything that was fully envisioned and there was a lot of, uh, cost engineering done, um, in the early phases, uh, of this project and during schematic design. And pulling a number of the site improvements out of the project, uh, and ensuring that we had through that $50 million enough for the base building, uh, was critically important. And so there were a number of site improvements pulled out, this was one of them. Um, and what we did is we wanted to find, uh, components that could have other appropriate funding sources. And this revealed itself as one of the prime examples because we have, uh, a existing public art fund, uh, there is a, uh, fund balance that is significant, um, and can fund this without taking away, uh, from other projects, uh, that were planned or envisioned. Uh, and so the, uh, art, the Art in Public Places Fund was designated as an opportunity to, to both fund this relocation, uh, and, uh, to provide some, a subsequent relief in that overall private budget. Uh, and so then that went through the, the process and is now at the city council.
Okay, so I guess, uh, that would be one of my asks, is that it not come out of this fund and that it be grouped with a larger fund? There's all, my understanding when we had our last update is that there's probably already going to be an ask because we're a little over budget. Um, I would rather leave the Arts and Culture Commission to be funded for, you know, our downtown, our streetscape plan to start implementing other projects, um, and then allow the money for the new center to be used for the new center and, and anything that comes with that. Um, the other, the other question I had was why not just wait until the project is done? Um, you know, construction changes, plans change, um, not, you know, um, within reason of course, but is there any reason we can't, um, take it down now and then put it back later once the new facility is up or, I don't know, I worry that we're going to move it somewhere. I echo Councilmember Davis's comment, I don't think that's the right spot myself. Um, being a frequent visitor to, to San Bruno Park, uh, like I think most of the council members, and I just worry that there's going to be some detour with the development and now we're going to have to pay another $50,000. I mean, is there any reason it has to be put back up right away?
Manager?
So, um, no, there is no requirement that it has to be, uh, put, uh, back up. Uh, we could conceivably take it down, uh, and store it, that would incur costs to appropriately store it to make sure that it wasn't damaged. Maybe we can find city property, but, uh, in, in order to, to sort of stabilize it and not damage the art, uh, we would need to, uh, incur some, some storage costs. I, at this moment, do not know what that is. Um, and the, the city council, uh, can direct staff, uh, to go back and work with the, the committee, uh, to identify another location, um, or if you, or more information on why that location, uh, was chosen, uh, because I do know that they looked at a number of, uh, locations and it was, um, a... I do know that they looked at a number of locations, and it was a collective decision that this was the best location. And so we can provide that information to the City Council.
Okay, so that would actually be really helpful. I'm sorry, I made a presumption that this was proposed to the committee in this location. So it would be helpful to understand why they selected that location. But I think for me, the biggest issue is really the cost. And I prefer that this come out of the larger budget, which is already over $50 million, and that we allow the Arts and Culture Committee to really focus on other areas in the city that needs some uplifting. Thank you.
Councilwoman Medina?
Yeah, when I first read this in the packet, I was like, wow, $37,000. And that's a lot of money, but understandably, things are getting more expensive, and it's, it says asphalt, I believe, on the center of it, but then interim Director Wallace mentioned rebar. And so is there a rebar pad at the base of it, or is the rebar just in the seated wall?
Actually, I'd have to research that. I know that there's a rebar going to be installed, but I'd have to find out exactly.
Yeah, and so, you know, the, this location has to be determined. I would be thinking more of some shade for people who want to kind of be at the structure and kind of hang out. Because I guess you'll be able to sit down on that seated wall, but there will be no real shade. And, but then again, you want, according to the staff report, you want to be away from a tree drip line. So the location, I'm thinking that the Park and Rec kind of hammered that out. So I'm okay with that. I do share some concerns about where the money is coming from. That fund is supposed to be for art, not for moving structures. And I understand, in this case, where else are we going to get the money from? Having $300,000 in that account, and we don't have, in my opinion, enough art in our city, that we should be, we should be looking at these elements in our streetscape plan, which I brought up before, of putting these murals and facials and taking some of that fund and doing what we can. And here we have a pocket of money that's been accumulating to that amount. And now, instead of putting in art, and I believe that it is allowable, because it's, I guess it could be fit in within the maintenance of art. It's a little bit of a stretch. We only have so much money. Would like to hear from our mayor what he thinks, too, and decide where to go from here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? And then also maybe the vice mayor, too. City manager?
Yes, one option that the council could consider is to authorize this to come from the art fund. And should we receive funds that allow for the repayment of it? Or if we put any unrestricted city money into the development of the rec center, we can pay back the art fund? One of the reasons why this project has been going at this timetable is because we wanted to select upon contract for and have the art removed and relocated up for demolition begins, which is currently planned to begin in early 2021. And so this is on a timetable that allows for that removal and replacement. And so to delay that, we, I think, at the very least, would need to come back relatively soon. And if a location is not agreed upon, at the very least, allocate enough funds for the removal and storage of the artwork. And again, council can authorize a repayment at a later date of the money that comes from the art fund.
I don't see any hands up right now, so a couple of my comments are, first, on the storage element, I don't like that concept. The reason is, is when Barton did the Great Separation, some art got stored and also got damaged. And so when we talk about money being wasted, that was wasted. So to me, the intent, and I'm not saying anybody did anything with malice, it was just basically stored, it got damaged, weather element, whatever it was, and then therefore we lost that opportunity, and those are monies that were not continued to show that art. As far as maintenance, yes, maintenance is a part of it, as in Centennial Park, the art that's there has been maintained, meaning it had to be repainted, retouched up, and those monies were used. Have Mr. Pudren go back in there and do that. My understanding is that the Culture and Arts Commission, as well as the Parks and Rec Commission, have read, and correct me, Director Wallace, they've reviewed this and they have looked at various sites, spent some time, and they're comfortable with the location. Am I correct? Yes, and they approved, both Commissions approved this unanimously. Okay. So with the location, I'm going to trust the work and the effort that staff, along with our two volunteer groups have done, and that's what we've pointed them for. You know, as far as we're looking, and again, maybe it needs to be quantified, too, a little bit where this money comes from. It's not out of the general fund, for example. And when we have development projects or other people are taking permits and other things out and having to pay that cost, which actually goes into the Culture and Arts Fund, what are we, what are, Finance Director or City Manager, what are we looking at as far as potential coming down, I mean, out maybe, you know, in the next year or so? Or guesstimate?
That's a hard question to answer on the fly. But certainly, just before this item, the City Council approved the Mills Park project that would pay that Art and Public Places fee, as well as any other development that takes place, where the fee applies, would pay it. I believe it's a 1% for the artists.
5% for residential, I think.
5% for residential.
We'll let the Finance Director?
Finance Director, sorry.
Of the fee amount, though?
Well, and so, through the chair, this is Keith Demartini, your Finance Director. The art fee is listed in the city's master fee schedule, and I'm looking at the fee schedule right now. And I believe that the art fee is a 5% of the permit amount for residential permit and 7% for a commercial permit. But I would need to sort of verify further the methodology by which that's assessed, and how much money is generated, and so on and so forth.
Okay. And that's good, and I know you can't be more specific than that, but at the same time, just obviously, that money will be replenished by developments and permits are being pulled for commercial as well as residential. I also am being told we have a member of the public who'd like to speak, with council's permission. I'm going to ask our city clerk to bring in Ms. Blanco.
Yes, just one moment. Jennifer Blanco, I'm trying to unmute you. Hi.
Good evening, City Council members, members of city staff, and members of the community. So as a former and one of the first commissioners that was appointed by City Council way back when, in 2003, as a Culture and Arts Commissioner, I know that we would look at programs, fund programs, to enhance the lives of our youth here in San Bruno, whether it would be through a cultural program for art, enrichment programs such as poetry slams, or paintings, drawings, art to display artwork programs such as that. I actually, I was really surprised to see that over $43,000, 43, and I think it's a $200,000, $1,000, that's going to come out of the Culture and Arts Commission. I have to really, I have to admit that I'm really surprised by my former colleagues that would have approved such an expenditure of this amount that could really go back into the community, especially with our youth, to fund certain programs for our youth. And I agree with, I was going to call Linda Trustee Mason, City Councilwoman Mason, and her concern with the amount of this cost to move the memorial structure. I just, I, I thank you so much to Javon for offering that option. I would just call that council members would, might want to move in that direction, where Javon had mentioned that there might be another source of funding that could put that money back at a later date. So I do understand the reason why the memorial structure needs to be removed, I get all that. But if the funding can, if that amount of money can be reimbursed back through the Culture and Arts Commission, that would be great. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else. And then any further discussion from council? Councilmember Davis?
First of all, I just remind, or I'm not even sure everybody understands this, that this project came forward from the Culture and Arts Commission and the Park and Rec Commission. It was actually asked by council way back when to develop, come up with a project or a piece of art or something, instead of a number of benches. We had really outgrown the number of benches with a memorial plaque on the benches in San Bruno Park. And so we wanted a way to recognize those in our community. And so the work, they were together. And so frankly, I understand where people are coming from. When you look at it, like, that's really probably not the best way to support this cost and funding. Part of cities in a financial crisis. And every time we sit as a subcommittee member and receive updates on the community recreation aquatic center, the costs and the issues just continue. And, you know, every time we turn around, you know, we want a swimming pool, but swimming pool costs are going up, and we want, and so I think it's so important that, and I think Javon said this earlier, that the $50 million doesn't really cut it for us, that we need, you know, another $10 million or more. And so I understand that this fund is really coming as a one-time thing from the Culture and Arts. I don't think it is a lot of money. And if at some point they can pay back the Culture and Arts, I think that would be great. But I am willing to support the proposed, well, and that staff has proposed to us.
Okay, any other comments from council? Seeing none. Turn the page. There's an action to adopt a resolution authorizing the relocation Memorial Recognition Scholarship in the amount of $43,372. Is there any action from council?
Through the chair?
Vice Mayor?
I will make a motion that we approve the resolution, taking into consideration the city manager's suggestion that at some point additional funds are identified, they could be, that the Culture and Arts Fund could be repaid from those. But aside from that, we can move forward with the relocation as stated in the resolution. So that's my motion.
And I'll second that.
There's a motion made and second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason? No, not without having a plan in place for that reimbursement. Thank you.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Wallace. Now we'll move on to study session. City clerk?
Item 7A, hold the study session and provide direction to staff regarding submitting to the voters at the November 3, 2020 election, a City of San Bruno recovery and reinvestment measure, increasing the transient occupancy tax, parentheses hotel tax.
And we'll go ahead and, who's going to take on this?
Mr. Mayor, Javon Grogan. I will begin the presentation, and I will be followed by-
Mr. Demartini, okay.
Demartini.
Thank you.
And I promise this will not be like the prior city manager, Finance Director presentations that go on for hours. We do have a brief PowerPoint slide, and so let's launch-
We had all forgotten about that until you just reminded us.
Yeah, the budget was long. And so what we're here to talk about is a potential local recovery and reinvestment ballot measure for increasing the city's transient occupancy tax, commonly referred to as the hotel tax. And so our objective, our objective for tonight is to hold a study session and provide, and for the City Council to provide direction to staff with regard to submitting a measure to voters for this November, actually, the November 3, 2020 municipal city election, for a potential increase in the city's hotel tax. Next slide. Our agenda for tonight, we have five items. We will give an overview of improving fiscal sustainability, a project that the council knows quite a bit about, community polling, ballot question. We will then request guidance from council on next steps, and then take questions. And so as we begin, as the City Council and the community knows, we really launched a fiscal sustainability project. And we always say that sustainability is key, because we are stable, even though COVID-19 hit us in the gut. But unfortunately, we are not sustainable. And that is mostly noticed by our 2021 budget that we grappled with this year with a $8.2 million shortfall. Approximately $4 million was a direct, was directly related to COVID-19, and the other four was related to expenditures outpacing revenues. And so as the City Council knows, in November of 2018, we launched what we termed as the Comprehensive Fiscal Sustainability Project. And there's really a lot for the council and the community to be proud of, of the work that has been done to date and the accomplishments, and we'll talk a little bit about those. But this is a long road, and COVID-19 actually means that the next time you see this slide, there may be a couple more months on this, if not years, before we truly are fiscally sustainable. But right now, where we are, is we are at, the red arrow is that implement midterm strategies. And so the City Council has, for a number of years, actually, going on three, looked at a host of revenue enhancement measures. And this project coupled not only revenue enhancement, but with the expenditure controls, looking at other funds that are not the general fund, that potentially pose a challenge to the general fund in adopting specific strategies around those, as well as looking at specific ballot questions. And the public knows that Measure G was on the ballot in November 2019 and was approved. And as a part of that list of revenue strategies, one of the things that was talked about was an increase in the transient occupancy tax. And that's really what we want to talk about tonight. But a few of the completed projects under our Comprehensive Fiscal Sustainability Project is we implemented a comprehensive development impact fee program, where new development will pay their fair share for municipal infrastructure, driven by the City Council, and we were able to carry that across the finish line in 2019 and get that approved. The Measure G district sales tax, as I mentioned, pre-COVID projected to bring in $4 million annually, currently in the 2021 fiscal year due to COVID-19, projected to bring in just under $3 million. We've made a number of improvements to our utility billing process, and there are a couple of things that are, continue to be in progress, and that is our citywide fee study and our cost allocation plan that we have committed to bring back to the City Council for final adoption in calendar year 2020. We're looking at locally controlled revenue sources, and the increase in the TOT is one of that, as well as cannabis that was talked about at a prior City Council study session, and will be on your very next City Council agenda for potentially putting that on the November 2020 ballot, as well as short-term rentals, which is set to come before you soon. And so there's a comprehensive list of strategies. There's no one silver bullet that will get us to be fiscally sustainable, but together- There's no one silver bullet that will get us to be fiscally sustainable, uh, but, but together, uh, they will. And the next slide, what we want to talk about is our, uh, long-range forecast. And I, I didn't talk about it in, in the roadmap, but one of the things that was initial in the roadmap is putting together a multi-year portrait of what the city's finances, uh, look like in multiple funds. And the portrait that's before you is of the general fund. And there's a lot of information on this slide, but I think the key point, uh, for the council and the community is the black line is our expenditures and the red line is our revenues. And even with all of the measures that we've taken to date, those lines are still not projected to meet until 24, 25. And frankly, uh, council has said it, that, that's not acceptable. We have to continue to strive toward, uh, a, a fiscally sustainable organization. Uh, and we have, uh, personnel costs, uh, that even without COLAS, uh, we know are increasing on a three to five percent rate, uh, when we take a look at our, our fully loaded benefit, benefited cost. Uh, and the projection that's before you has no significant increase in service levels. Uh, and what we also know is in the adopted 2021 budget, uh, to help reduce that $8.2 million deficit, 30 city positions that were funded in the prior fiscal year are not funded in this current fiscal year. Uh, and so we, we are really looking at every opportunity, uh, to get these lines to meet a loss similar than, than 24, 25. Uh, and, and one problem of that is enhancing our revenue pool. Um, and so, uh, with that, the, the next two, two slides, I'll turn it over to the finance director because we just want to remind the public, uh, that pays their property tax, just how much the city of San Bruno gets.
Thank you very much, Javon. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the, members of the city council. Keith DiMartini, your finance director. And so, um, the next few slides, I'll talk, uh, uh, in just a little bit of, of detail. And these are slides that the city council and the public has seen in prior presentations. Uh, property tax and sales tax are two, uh, of the largest, uh, general fund tax revenue sources for the city of San Bruno. Um, however, we, we receive a very small percentage of the total amount of property tax and sales tax generated statewide. This graphic here shows that the city of San Bruno only receives about 15 cents on every single dollar of property tax that is remitted to the county. As you can see, the major, um, the major, uh, municipal, uh, programs that are funded in property tax are public education in and throughout the state of California and in San Mateo County at over 50% in total. The city only receives 15% of property tax, of property tax dollars. This next graphic is a very similar breakdown of, of sales tax dollars that are generated and what portion actually stays in the city of San Bruno. So for, uh, this, uh, uh, an example, sales tax bill of $75 at a 9.75% uh, rate, which does include the half-cent district sales tax for Measure G that was adopted by the vote, the voters back in November of 2019. Even with that, the city of San Bruno only receives 15% of the total sales tax that is generated on that sales bill. And so part of this comprehensive fiscal sustainability effort was to really identify revenue sources that could be more locally controlled. Um, Measure G is 100% controlled by the city of San Bruno. Um, and similarly, this TOT measure, um, is a, is a very similar measure as that as well. So moving on, uh, the city, uh, did commission a community priority survey that was conducted in March of 2020. Uh, this was a survey of 625 respondents in total, and it included 354 homeowners. And the next two slides summarize some of the key findings of that survey. Over 65% of the respondents did indicate to, to the city that they were satisfied with the job that the city and the state were doing to address the impacts of COVID-19. This survey was issued right as, uh, COVID-19 was becoming more prominent and the shelter in place orders were taking effect. The survey also indicated that over 63% of the respondents were satisfied with the job the city is doing, uh, to provide services to the community. And that the largest problem facing the city, according to the survey respondents, was the coronavirus response and recovery, um, efforts and the needs. This slide here lists what were the residents' identified priorities on that community priority survey. It included continuing maintain, the continuing maintaining of our street repair programs, uh, and maintaining jobs, supporting families and residents that are in financial transition, uh, particularly from COVID-19, and then also expanding services to support local businesses and maintaining, uh, police patrols and safety. Many of these programs, uh, are priorities for, are, are, were, were communicated to, to city staff as a priority, um, of, of residents. And many of these programs are currently at risk of potentially further cuts in upcoming budget cycles, um, as the city manager showed on the five-year financial forecast a few slides earlier. Um, if we continue to have deficits, many of these programs may likely be, um, cut further than what they currently were in the 2021 proposed budget. So specifically, the, the revenue measure that is before, that is being presented before the council this evening would be a, a, an increase to the existing transient occupancy tax for the hotel operators in the city of San Bruno. The current tax on a room rate is 12%. And if that rate were to increase, uh, to 14%, it is projected that that would generate an additional $500,000 annually. And that projection was done pre-COVID, um, prior to, uh, the impacts, and as the city council is aware, um, in the proposed, uh, 2021 budget for the city, TOT revenue is projected to decrease about 40% year over year. So the hotel industry is substantially impacted by shelter in place. So the revised, uh, additional revenue generated from, from a 2% uh, rate increase would be approximately $370,000. And in the March 2020 community priority survey, the survey respondents did indicate, uh, to the city that just over 62% of them did favor a TOT rate increase. This graphic here on this slide just shows that the 62%, again, favored a potential, uh, TOT rate increase, as I just mentioned earlier. Staff thought it would be important for the city council to be aware that the city of San Bruno is not the only city that is exploring this currently, nor are we the only city that, um, that has thought about increasing the TOT rate. This slide currently lists, uh, cities within San Mateo County and other cities throughout the Bay Area that have a TOT rate greater than 12%. As you can see, many of them are, are very close by. The city of Brisbane was recently increased from 12% to 14% last, last, uh, November. Daly City and San Carlos have a rate that's greater, as well as South San Francisco. You can see San Francisco has a rate of 14% currently. And there's a, a few other cities that are greater than 12% as well. The city of San Mateo is currently exploring a TOT rate increase at the same time that the city of San Bruno is, uh, per council's awareness. Okay, moving on. The proposed ballot question that is, uh, that is written in this, in the staff report that's on this slide, I should go ahead and take a minute and read it, uh, for, for the city council and for the public. This is a proposed ballot question that's before you. "To maintain essential city services facilities such as addressing traffic congestion, parking issues, maintaining neighborhood safety, 911 emergency medical response times, disaster health crisis response services, park city facilities and general services, shall an ordinance updating the city of San Bruno's existing transient occupancy tax, a bed tax paid only by hotel lodging guests, from 12% to 14% until ended by voters, providing approximately $370,000 annually for San Bruno with independent oversight audits, all funds staying local, be adopted."
Sure. Um, and I, I'll talk a little bit about, uh, the independent oversight, uh, and why that is, uh, underlying. So it's really a decision point for the city council. Uh, when the TOT tax was initially discussed, it was really intended to help fund our structural shortfall, essentially to provide additional ongoing revenue to help the city fund its operation. That's distinctly different from the Measure G tax. Um, that was largely talked about, about being additive. And what the city council wanted added to Measure G and what we heard was a, uh, oversight committee that would review, uh, where those dollars would be allocated each year and make a recommendation to the city council. Uh, and so through this, it's underlined because we wanted to call that out for the city council because it's really a decision point for you on whether, um, certainly there, there will be inde, uh, uh, independent audits that will be made public and submitted to the city council. Uh, but with, uh, the potential increase in this TOT, uh, would you like, uh, an oversight board, uh, to allocate, um, or, or not, I'm sorry, not to allocate, but to review where that, uh, additional dollars would be spent? Or would you like to retain, uh, that sole authority through the budgeting process as we really look at shoring up that structural gap between our revenues and expenditures?
Okay, so, um, if the city council continues to support this effort, staff would be prepared to bring back to the city council at the next council meeting on the 28th. Uh, staff reported including a resolution and ordinance, uh, that would allow this effort to proceed. The resolution would allow the city to submit to the voters the TOT rate increase for the November 2020 election. It would also authorize, uh, a process, uh, permitting a community supplemental of an argument for the ballot measure as well, and the city attorney's impartial analysis, um, like most ballot measures. The ordinance itself would feature, uh, the rate increase from 12 to 4%. And it would continue to allocate those proceeds for general purposes that was indicated in the ballot question itself. And it would also indicate that the effective date of the new tax rate would be March 1st of 2021. So just wrapping up tonight's presentation, again, the request to city council this evening is just to hold a study session and to request that the council provide direction to staff regarding submitting to the voters in the upcoming November 2020 election, a San, City of San Bruno recovery and reinvestment measure, increasing the transient occupancy tax. And before I turn it over for questions, I wanted to just run through a brief timeline of the, of the upcoming election cycle. And the first item on this, on this list here is actually, um, a meeting that was held by city staff with most of the hotel operators in the city of San Bruno. Um, we held a business roundtable meeting with the hotel operators last Friday. And during that meeting, the city manager provided a brief fiscal overview and outlook, uh, of the city of San Bruno. And, um, we were able to listen to the hotel operators in regards to, um, the changes in their business, particularly during shelter in place, and just listen to what concerns or questions they had regarding the potential TOT rate increase. And during that meeting, the hotel operators did request that staff bring back to the city council, um, a potential phased approach to the TOT, uh, measure, which would increase that rate over a period of time, up to 14%. And so staff wanted to convey that feedback, um, to the council at this time. And so for example, if the rate were to be phased, starting at 13%, that would be in effect for about a, for a year, and then increase to 14% thereafter, the fiscal impact of that would be approximately $185,000 less of revenue each year. And so if you were to phase that rate from 12% to 13% to 14%, it would just, uh, proportionally reduce, uh, the amount of TOT, uh, generated. Tonight, we are having a study session. And then, uh, with council's, um, direction, we would come back to you at the next council meeting, requesting your action to place that on, um, the ballot for 2020. We would then, if that were to be approved, we would remit all the required, uh, documenta, documents to the county to be included on the ballot. And then over the next few months, a, a variety of community outreach and education efforts would be underway. Election day would be on November 3rd. And if the, if the voters in San Bruno approved, the new rate would take effect on March 1st of 2021. And that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions, uh, from colleagues?
To the chair.
Vice Mayor, uh, Salazar.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, just a couple of quick questions. Um, for starters, the, the amount that's stated on the ballot language, so that would be the amount that we anticipate getting, getting on year one, uh, rather than looking at, um, a number that is the perceived run rate in normal times. And I'm wondering, um, why would we want to do that versus stating that it could generate up to a certain amount based on, on projections?
And, and, uh, before that's answered, city clerk, um, did we lose, uh, councilmember Mason?
Yes, and I'm trying to bring her back in. It's just giving me some trouble here. Just one second.
Okay, can we just, uh, Vice Mayor, if we can pause on the response and-
I think I got her in. Let's see if she pops up. There she is.
Okay. And I see her back. Okay, uh, city manager to the vice mayor's question.
Sure, uh, so the vice mayor's question was, the ballot question, uh, lists the estimated revenue uh, that would be generated approximately $370,000. Now that is reflective of the economic recession that has, uh, been triggered by COVID-19. Uh, pre-COVID 19, the estimate was 500,000. And so the question is, why does the ballot question say the, the lower amount? Uh, and, and that's just because we wanted to err on the side of, um, full transparency and reflecting today's estimate based on today's economy. Uh, we do not know when, uh, the hotel industry will fully recover. Uh, and we, we did not want to open ourselves up to any, uh, potential allegations that we were over inflating the amount of revenue that could be generated, um, uh, and we're in a recession. And, and so it, it was essentially erring on the side of caution. Um, and during the public education, uh, efforts, we can certainly, uh, make bold points and, and nuance that correctly.
Okay. Yeah, and, and the rest of the language is a little awkward, like ballot measures tend to be. And I know that there's a lot of considerations in this and it, it's, uh, and, and you have word limits and everything. So it, it's, it's, it's hard to read for me, but I, I know that, that you're addressing certain concerns and you're trying to be as transparent as possible. So, um, I mean, I think overall it, it should work in combination with, um, with some information that could be provided to the, to the voters. Um, regarding the oversight, uh, I don't think that oversight would be required. I mean, it, it's, um, we're, we're adding to a tax that's already being collected and that part of it is not, um, being scrutinized separately. And so it's going into the general fund and, and I think it would be, uh, appropriate to just have it go in there and have us review it as part of the, of the regular budget cycle. So I don't think that's necessary. And, and then regarding the, the comments from the business owners, um, and, and their preference to, um, to ramp this up. I, I'm wondering, would it be possible if we were to approve this, um, d- does the council still retain the ability to, um, move that dial back if we're seeing that we're having some negative impacts to our, to our businesses? So say that we, you know, we, we do approve the 14% without any language saying that we're, um, that we're gonna start off with, with 13 and move to 14. Could we, uh, from the city council standpoint, still say, no, for the first year or the first six months, we want to, we want to stay at 12% and then, uh, retain that, uh, ability to go up to 14 with the voter's approval?
City manager?
Yes, that is true. Uh, the language that's in the ballot question, uh, essentially will be a maximum authorization of 14% from the voters. And the city council can reduce that, uh, lower, uh, and step into it, uh, and, and, and still be in full compliance with, uh, the voter, the, the voter authorization.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes, thank you. Um, I actually really like that idea of being able to stagger the percentage. I mean, I just, I can't imagine being a hotel owner. Um, in fact, I, I've been communicating with a lot of hotel owners over, over, all throughout California because we're all struggling to pay their water bills. And it's, it's difficult, extremely challenging times. And I don't see the economy turning around for a while. So, um, I can imagine how they would feel about knowing that this is coming. So I would be very interested in some sort of staggered percentage up to the 14%. Um, uh, I did have a, I did have a question. What about City of San Mateo? I see that they're interested. What is their current, uh, TOT tax? And does anybody know what they're thinking of increasing it to?
Yeah, uh, to, to the chair. I believe their current-
Yes, Director.
See, I believe their current TOT is 12%. And I believe they're, they're looking to raise it up to 14%. But I cannot confirm that because they're in the same timeline that we are conferring with the city council about, uh, obtaining council's direction about how to proceed with the ballot question.
Okay. And then, um, South San Francisco has a $2.00 conference tax per room. What's that additional cost about? What's that additional cost about?
I believe, I believe that additional cost is for um, for, I believe their hotels are set up to have a number of conferences because they're a lot larger hotels. And so they have a separate tax that goes into a separate pot of money to use for, that, that is generated for conferences. So like we, we, the City of San Bruno gets T O T revenue from um, from folks at State House Hotels. And then in South City, there's a separate tax, uh, that's a, that's a separate revenue source that's generated for South San Francisco for conferences. Again, I can't confirm the details of that, but that's my understanding of how that tax works.
That works. Thank you. Um, th- those are my questions right now.
Any other uh, questions from council? Uh, council member Medina, and then council member Mason.
Um, yeah, I agree. The language is um, just all over the place. But it seems that's uh, some English major somewhere that's turning over in their grave. But okay, the oversight, um, I, I believe that I'm okay with the council making the final call on that. Um, I, I believe that the ramping is a, an acknowledgement to our hotel operators and and I, and I'm open, open to that as well. So um, the numbers are sixty-one percent. Is that right? That's what the number I, I jotted down for a current approval for that, for that um, March twentieth um, survey.
Yes, council member Medina, that's correct.
Alright, thank you.
Councilperson Mason?
Um, so um, is there any reason we couldn't maybe have like the Park and Rec Commission review this since uh, facilities is included um, in this ballot measure? That way we don't have to create a new committee, have a new staff liaison, you have an existing commission um, who also, I think, has needs and um, might be a good partner for this particular endeavor?
So the city council uh, can identify any um, body to be um, a recommending body or an advisory body uh, for this tax measure. Uh, this will be a general purpose tax and could be used for any general purpose need. Uh, and so if the city council wanted a body, the um, the Citizen Revenue Oversight um, Commission, which is what we uh, casually refer to as the Measure G Committee because it was set up for Measure G, would sort of be the most sort of overarching body. Uh, but a- again, this revenue source was always talked about as helping uh, the city close that structural gap between revenues and expenditures and to support the general fund, which is truly distinctly different from a lot of the conversations around Measure G, which were largely centered on roads, but, but additional, or or specifically being additive to what the city was already doing.
Yeah, so I'd be fine with Measure G. I, I do think that there needs to be a pass through. It's a half million dollars. Um, and I think it would be great if we had um, an existing committee, not a new committee, but um, review, an annual audit, or whatever it may be. Um, I think for that exact reason, right? The, the Measure G budget that came to us last didn't include any of the street repairs until we, we requested it. So that, that's always my concern. Um, I wanted just to be clear because there has been ambiguity in past ballot measures. I, I noticed that there's nothing in here refraining, refrain, um, restricting the city from using these funds for salaries. Is that right?
So if we restrict it for any purpose, even salaries, it becomes a special purpose tax. Um, and that's meaning there's the uh, a number of things legally about the tax. And so uh, this is envisioned to be a general purpose tax, which requires a fifty plus one uh, voter uh, approval threshold.
Okay, okay, but I just want to be very open and transparent that this, these entire funds could be utilized for salaries at some point if needed.
Absolutely. This is intended to cover uh, the gap between revenues and expenditures. Uh, it's, it's staff's understanding.
Okay, and these funds, based on what I'm reading, I didn't see the word library, but I did see city, city facilities. So these funds could also be used to help the library um, if, for their needs. I think they had some kind of an air conditioner need a couple of months ago that was taken off the table um, because we didn't have the funds, but this money could also be used for the library, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think that's it. Thank you.
I know we have a member of the public, um, uh, clerk.
Um, yes, Vipul Dayal, I'm bringing you in the room right now. Mr. Dayal, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Dayal?
I, sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Hello, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor, city council members, and city staff. Uh, my name is Vipul Dayal, and we own the newly rebranded Hotel Fifteen Fifty South Cisco Airport Hotel. Uh, before I begin, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Keith and Mr. Jovan for meeting us um, a couple of days ago. We really appreciate it. And I could tell from your guys' questions, the city council members' questions, and by your comments, that you guys are really understanding the hurt that we are facing as, as hotels and as the, as the travel industry in general. Uh, I just wanted to point out a couple of comments, uh, in case you know or you didn't know, that we start, we started seeing decline in our business in December two thousand eighteen. Because that's when China started seeing, uh, that's when China started banning their travel. So that was, it started much later than what everybody thinks here in South Cisco or here by the South Cisco Airport. And then number two is if you don't know, um, is that ninety-five percent of our cred- of our guests pay via credit card. And so they also pay their T O Ts via credit card, which means that we in turn pay our credit card fees, our credit card fees are normally between two to three percent. So that means we lose money every time a hotel guest pays their T O T via credit card. So it's not really a one for one exchange because we're paying the two, 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 three percent credit card fee. Uh, and another thing I want to point out is that I believe, I strongly believe that the three hundred and seventy thousand that's listed in the ballot measure should not be there. I don't think, uh, I don't think it's going to be that high. Uh, just to let you know, um, business is severely down. Um, and 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 and, and we don't see no end in sight. I think it's going to be till twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, till we start to get back to twenty nineteen numbers. So I'm urging everybody, uh, I'm urging you guys to, you know, strongly consider the strat, the stagger approach, which is let's raise it to thirteen percent. Uh, we know it's going to pass as hotel owners, uh, you know, sixty-one percent of the polling that was done says it's going to pass, and so we already know it. We're just asking for a little bit of mercy. And you know, let's use a stagger approach. Let's do thirteen percent right now and then fourteen percent in the following year. And let's just put it on the ballot. You know, let's be transparent about it. I know the city council, uh, you could always dial it down, but you know, let's be transparent. Just put thirteen percent or fourteen percent on there. Um, that way it gives us enough time and uh, during these crazy times to adjust, just as the city and everyone else is as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Not seeing um, anyone else from the public, bringing it back to council. Um, a couple of things that were, were asked, but one is having a dollar amount placed within the ballot. Now, when we started to discuss as far as uh, a tax for cannabis, there was discussion that there was a dollar amount, then it was said, well, or suggested. But then not to put it because how do you really know, right? There was no really guarantee, and we wanted to um, try to give a, a realistic number. So what's the thought on that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please, city attorney.
Does require that there be an estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated by the tax. That estimate could be zero, or it could be like it was for the cannabis measure, or it could be a different number like it is for this measure.
Okay, so, but, but we chose, if, and correct me, not to put a dollar amount on the other potential measure.
The, the, the estimated, the, the other ballot measure says it's not expected to generate revenue initially.
Alright, so that's, that's the clarification is because it doesn't exist, so therefore it won't generate, so that's why that's not there.
Right.
And, and I know it was, it was asked about facilities. So facilities in general, whether it's um, uh, as the council member Mason brought up um, at the library, but it's also the uh, cooling and other situation that the P D is facing at that facility that could possibly be uh, funded. Um, it could have been for uh, better security with here at City Hall when it starts to open again. Those type of dollars could be utilized at any of our facilities, right?
Yes, sir. It could be used for both capital uh, and operational costs.
Okay, thank you. Um, other questions or uh, comments from my colleagues on this? And again, it is just a study session, so we're not looking for motions or seconds, um, but just direction for staff. Uh, council member Medina?
Um, the three hundred and seventy thousand dollar number um, from, from Vipul's estimate, estimate, how does staff, um, how did they come up with that number? And, and could they possibly give an answer where they got it or how they came up with it and maybe reexamine it? Um, that's all.
Sure, council member Medina, this is, this is Keith. And so the, the three hundred and seventy thousand dollar estimate was based on the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one adopted budget for the T O T revenue for the City of San Bruno, which is approximately two point one million dollars, um, which again is approximately forty percent less than what was being estimated in fiscal year nineteen twenty. And what was being estimated in nineteen twenty was again, less than what was, what was previously our sort of run rate of actuals at over three point seven, three point eight million dollars annually prior to the economic downturn. So it's based on our twenty twenty-one adopted budget.
Okay, I, I, I don't know if Vipul has more up to date information, being that he's in a hotel. I just wanted to make sure, like, when, when a hotel operator's saying, hey, that number's too high, then I, that kind of raises the hair on the back of my neck, like, our whole budget wise could be off. But these are estimated budgets, and and I just wanted to uh, to highlight that. And, and it is a study session, so we can go back and maybe look at some numbers from um, when, when you met with the hotel operators, did they give you like their current um, reservations? And, and um, how things are going for them when, when you talked to them?
Yeah, city manager?
Sure, council member Medina, we had, we, we had a, a very robust conversation uh, with the hotel operators um, on, on Friday the tenth. Uh, in addition, I, I have been individually calling uh, hotel operators and having discussions with them. Uh, as well as uh, a, a, a lot of analysis went into the development of, of our twenty twenty-one budget and the projections for T O T. In addition to looking uh, into estimates of uh, what we think uh, would occur in San Bruno, also partnering with uh, neighboring municipalities up and down the peninsula, uh, looking into hotel operations. And uh, you know, I, I do understand that, you know, we had one hotel operator, um, Vipul tonight, who said that he thinks that that estimate is high. You know, we will certainly circle back with him. Uh, and the conversations that we had uh, with the hotel, hotel operators were, were very um, enlightening. Uh, so much so that uh, at the end of the meeting, uh, I asked him if they would like to continue to have these uh, conversations uh, with me and Keith on a regular basis. And so uh, we'll start a cadence of that. Um, uh, but certainly we will monitor um, T O T receipts uh, on a monthly basis. Uh, and when we provide the city council with quarterly updates, uh, we will uh, have, have a better sense on where we are uh, with our budget, not just in T O T, uh, but, but everything.
That's fine. Thank you.
Uh, and, and if I can, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, we did research, uh, and answer to your question about South San Francisco and their additional two point, uh, or two dollars and fifty cent per room tax. Uh, the City of South San Francisco has a, a conference center, and that tax actually helps to fund their conference center. Uh, and so we, we've been to a number of meetings there, and so that's one of their built-in funding mech- mechanisms within their T O Ts to help fund their conference center.
You're correct. Yes, thank you uh, for looking into that. Other uh, uh, comments, questions, and or direction? Uh, maybe the first question is, does uh, council wish to proceed with putting, uh, giving direction to staff to having uh, them continue to have it on the November third, twenty twenty election? Say a yes, a yes, a yes, Vice Mayor? I, I'm not saying about the percentage, just about whether we want them to proceed.
Right, and, and so one question before, before I give my answer to that. Um, I, I'm also hearing rumors of a lot of other tax measures that are going to be on this ballot. You know, potentially a Caltrain tax, uh, taxes for all kinds of other things. So um, how are we feeling, knowing about everything else that's out there? Um, that our, that our tax will, will compete favorably with those? And that we uh, that we will be successful i- in this go around?
Sure, uh, so.
Fair question.
Through, through the mayor, let, let me take that. Um, certainly, uh, when the city uh, puts a tax measure on the ballot, um, we do that in the hopes that it will be successful. Uh, however, uh, because we are a, a city and we are spending municipal dollars, we cannot advocate uh, on behalf of, 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 of the tax. And so once the city council decides to place the measure on the ballot, um, the conversations and the communications uh, that we have are very um, uh, sort of strict and guided by law. And so we're, we're always very sort of cautious on um, not wanting to sort of trip into advocacy, uh, but, but play that factual information role. Um, but certainly, the case is true is when there are multiple issues on a ballot uh, and you are a municipality and you're down ballot, uh, there uh, is a likelihood um, of eroding uh, support. Um, and just to be clear, uh, the direction that the city council is giving tonight is not to actually put it on the ballot. It's the direction for staff to come back at your very next meeting on July twenty eighth, which is called our placement meeting, uh, where you will make the decision to put um, any and all measures on the ballot. And the, the two measures that will uh, be before you if you say yes to this item would be the cannabis, uh, potential cannabis tax and uh, this potential increase in the T O T. And so, uh, yes, we have been tracking uh, other measures that uh, may be put on by other entities. Um, but essentially, we're, you know, we're, we're, we're making the decision that we think is uh, right uh, for our, our fiscal reality, uh, and hoping that uh, the voters um, uh, recognize that and, and make their own independent decision.
Right, and we've been going down this path for, for quite some time. And so it, it's been our, you know, we, we made a choice a long time ago to consider this and start developing it. And I think we've done all our due diligence and we've done the research. Um, I'm, I just want to make sure that, given the, the, the rest of the environment, that we still feel that we, uh, that that sixty percent is still a, a, a good, a good number for us to base it on. And so if, if staff is saying that they still feel confident, then I'm okay with moving forward.
Yeah, uh, through the chair, uh, council member Salazar, on that point, um, the survey took place right at the beginning and almost the depths of, of heightened fears about uh, COVID nineteen. And, and what we heard from our, our ballot consultant is that it was probably the worst time to be in, in the field um, with, with the voter poll, especially a, a poll to, to add additional taxes on hotels when there was a sort of hard shelter in place and, um, and, and it, what we're experiencing was still very new to the world. Uh, and so uh, the fact that we were um, surveying then, uh, actually made, gave them some uh, more confidence in the poll results, knowing that it was probably the, the worst time to be in the field with a poll.
Correct.
Okay, so what I'm hearing uh, from the five is to proceed forward with a T O T tax. Um, I think I also heard numbers can be uh, double checked as far as uh, that amount of potential income for the ballot. for the ballot. And then I think the last thing is on the verbiage and how it would want to be said in regards to the up to 14% and the council can do it, whether it's the staggered in way. I think that's one of the other, is there anything else, City Manager, that we need direction from council?
The oversight, whether the council wants to have an oversight board. I will say that on the ability to ramp up, the city council have a choice there in whether you put it within the language of the resolution, or you leave the language as proposed and retain that flexibility to lower it. And so that's just a nuance that you may want to consider.
Okay, so there's the two items left. You heard City Manager, so I won't repeat it. Any further direction from council? So I think we have two questions we all need to answer.
Through the chair.
Vice Mayor?
I would say the language is confusing enough, and I don't think I'd want to make it any worse by throwing in this whole, we might do this and we might do that. I think if the public understands that it's up to 14%, and we do something different that's within our authority, I don't think it needs to be stated.
And oversight, I'm going to say that I think you made your statement, but I-
I said, I don't believe we need oversight.
Thank you. Other colleagues?
I'll ditto Michael's comments as well, this is Laura.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Mason, I see your mic's off, I mean, I'm sorry, on.
Oh, I think, I don't know if I need to say it again, but I would just say, yes, oversight. I'm okay with it being an existing committee or commission, and I think it should be on the ballot.
And what about the percent?
Oh, I don't think I have, honestly, I don't believe I have a preference on the percent.
Okay. Thanks. Councilmember Medina?
Thank you. I think a couple words, 13% in the first year, 14% in the second year is being conscious of what our hotel operators are going through. And that's what I would, that's what I would like to see on the ballot. I'm okay with the oversight being by us and not having to have it go to another agency or oversight commission.
Thank you. I, for myself, too, the current up to 12% has been through the general fund and through the normal recourse, which we do have a CAFRA audited annually. I don't know that the existence of $500,000, when it's projected, or it has been a 2-point something, to put that on an oversight, I don't know that that's needed at this point. And because it's not specified to go going toward a certain element, for me personally, on the verbiage, I don't want to make it more confusing. If it gives us the flexibility, I think what I've also learned, two things, is that, like some cities that say on the canvas, it was like up to 10%, gives the council the flexibility to raise it or lower it based on economic times or not. If you say 13%, you go, gosh, we should bring it back down to 12. But you can't. We have to go back out to the vote of the people, and please correct me, City Attorney, if you wanted to do that because it got worse. And then you have the latitude to bring it up. So am I correct on that?
So, Mr. Mayor, yes, the city council always retains the discretion to impose a lower tax that is authorized by the voters, regardless of what the rate is in the tax measure.
Okay. You know, I don't have, I do want it on the ballot, yes. I think we've already said that. I'm not, I think it can do both things. If it's up to, the council still can say 13, but it leaves us latitude or lower it. I just don't want to make it more confusing either. That's my only concern. I'm worried about all the verbiage already. City manager, Finance Director, City Attorney, do you have enough guidance or no?
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so that will conclude the study session. We're going to move on to item eight, comments from council members. Item A, we'll start with Councilmember Mason. Possible council resolution affirming the city's commitment to stand in solidarity with the Black community and condemn racism. Councilmember Mason?
Okay, great, thank you, councilmembers, City Manager, and City Attorney, and everybody who's still on this meeting right now. So recently, Brisbane passed a similar measure through their city council as well, and I think San Bruno is in a position to do the same, given the diversity that we have in San Bruno. You know, we talked about our commitment about, I wouldn't say at our last meeting or maybe two meetings ago, to equality and to justice. And the reality is that a lot of things happen and a lot of words are spoken, but it's forgotten about shortly after an incident or shortly after, you know, the news media's regular rotation. And so I think this is an opportunity for the city of San Bruno to continue the conversation around what is really happening. Unfortunately, I think it's focused solely on police and the Black community because the injustice that we saw with George Floyd is really the worst repercussion you can have, which is death, and you can't come back from death. But I think that this resolution is more than death, it's more than this extreme. It's saying that, and reiterating, that equality exists in so many different areas in our society. The National Institute of Health has said that Blacks are less likely to have health insurance from private employers than their white counterparts. The CDC has said that pregnancy-related deaths per 100 live births for Black women older than 30 was four to five times as high as it was for their white counterpart women. The CDC has also said that the death rate for Black infants is twice that of infants born to non-Hispanic white mothers. The Brooks Institute, most recently, has released information regarding COVID-19 and said that Black people are dying from COVID-19 at the same rate as white people that are more than a decade older than them. And amongst those 45 to 54 years, 45 years old, rates of death amongst the Black community are at least six times higher than whites, six times higher than whites, everybody. So what I'm asking tonight is for us to stand in solidarity on what I believe is really the right side of history, to say that we stand in solidarity with the Black community and we continue to be committed to condemning racism and working towards equality, which we're doing right now with our work around law enforcement. The chief has been, I think, very responsive, the City Manager has been very responsive, they're working on a report for us. So this is really just continuing the message that it's not just what we've seen with George Floyd, it's making sure that we're equal in the most important areas in all of our lives, in healthcare, in education, and in our really civil liberties. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember, great words. Are there any, so obviously it is on the agenda, so we can have open discussion and dialogue, and I think the council member has brought forward a proposal and is seeing if there's willingness or, and I would think she's also, I'm sure, open, like, does it need to include this or not or whatever, but it's an open dialogue. So, Councilmember Medina?
Yes, I'm in support of this. It was one thing, a great thing, to have a statement that was read by, collaborated by all of us and then read by all of us. I think this takes it to another level with the resolution, with strong supporting language. And so how we come to write this, I'm also open to it, and Linda did a great job before, so this is her idea, but I'm backing it. So however we need to get there, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I think Michael's muted.
Vice Mayor, are you talking or no? You're muted.
Yeah. So I definitely appreciate Councilmember Mason's passion around this, and, you know, the statistics that she quoted are shocking, and there's definitely a lot of work to be done on a national level. My only concern is that issuing another proclamation is really just, we're putting words on paper again, and we've done that before. And honestly, if we're, if we really want to address this issue and we have these issues in San Bruno, which is a population that we were elected to represent, I would like us to take some concrete actions and just move past the words. We've issued the words, we've made the statements, we've attended the rallies. But if these issues exist in our community, then I would really like us to take some action to address them. And I would propose that maybe our next step should be really examining what's happening in San Bruno. How do these, how do these national statistics manifest themselves in our community? What inequalities are we seeing in our community? And address those, not just, you know, in broad sweeping terms, but in real actions that we can take. And so I would say we need to go further than just a proclamation, we need to really examine what's happening in our city and address those issues. So those are my comments.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Here I am, again, agreeing with Michael. You know, I made this comment to council meeting last year when we came forward with San Bruno Cares. And I was, I think it's a great thing, we've got these posters made, and what is it, a picture opportunity in San Bruno Cares, but what's it really mean? You know, I'm so tired of hearing the words. I mean, I see the social media posts, I see people put things up, and it's, you know, it's the, you know, thing to do right now. So, you know, you change your social media page all black and you, you know, you sell these great things, but you know what? I want to live something 365 days a year, and I want something to get catchy into our community, and then our community becomes part of something that's bigger than that. And I think it's about action, it's about doing things. You know, I don't know, maybe a subcommittee of council members that can look at, you know, what are some things we can do? But, you know, somebody posted on Nextdoor, I don't, I try to really stay away from Nextdoor and posting because they're just, it send you down a bad rabbit hole. But I'm constantly on it and looking at resident comments and whatnot, but somebody posted a picture of doing some cleanup and taking, picking up garbage, and then the next person, you know, said, you know, we should do that, we should go out and do that. And it's about that kind of thing, it's about starting a movement and letting it carry forward. You know, I go out and pick up garbage, I picked up garbage over the weekend, I never, I don't post pictures of what I do and how I support our community, but I want to see everybody reach out to our community. I mean, do you know and do you realize the amount of depression that's going on in our community? Do you realize the teenagers are struggling because they're not back in high school? Do you realize the child abuse that's going on in our community? Do you realize the domestic violence that's going on in our community? And do you realize the people who have attempted suicide in our community? And I know them. And we have big issues, and not to say that this is not a big issue, but we've got to do something and really do something positive for our community, and really try to unite our community, all of our community, regardless of race, regardless of nationality, regardless of the color of their skin, about being, you know, good people to each other, about giving back to our community, about helping one another. I'd like to see us do something, I really would, and I just, you know, I think what we did getting together and reading a message, I think that was pretty special. You know, I have young adults, and I cannot tell you how passionate they are. You know, to hear my daughter, who's 22 years old, talk about her passion, and really, the opinions are so strong, and she's really educated me, and I'm actually proud to say that she's my daughter, and I'm proud for her words and her passion about, you know, what's going on in this community and in our society, and she really educated me. We got to get the young people involved. I think it's something that we really, they're so powerful, they're so amazing, and they can spread the message and we can do some good things. So I look forward to doing something that's really going to make change and make people feel like they're welcome. I never want anybody to ever feel like they can walk into a store, walk into a restaurant, walk into a public facility and not feel welcome, regardless of who they are. Thank you.
Well, thank you to everybody, and thank you for Councilmember Mason bringing this up. I'm also, the actions speak louder than words, I'd like to see it maybe even go further. I'd like to see, you know, when we talk about racism, I think just like, hey, it should be condemned for anyone and everyone. And I know there was a staff member who shared with me an incident in Burlingame where they stayed in the coffee shop because somebody was screaming at the employee who happened to be of Asian descent. We have a council member that is a neighbor of ours who experienced that when he was trying to grocery shop months ago. And so I think, I think we need to bring it up, because it's not acceptable anywhere, and I think we need to get to that point. And I think a resolution is, you know, like we're saying, it's there, but what can we do better? Where can we go further with it? How can we introduce it more and more tangibly? I know one of our statements, the one that we read together was, you know, "We call on our San Bruno family to actively participate in this campaign by turning words into actions 365 days a year." And so I would like to see if we can't, again, collaborate, maybe start with a subcommittee, and start to find a way to, you know, with school being virtual too, potentially, some of it, you know, maybe we can help introduce something, maybe there can be something that's done. And I agree with Councilmember Davis, the young people, on my block, you know, somebody had Black Lives Matter, then it became here, then I gave the poster, and we stand against hate, and so that came up. And maybe those are minor things, but that's just starting to meet your neighbor, that's starting the dialogue, it's sending a clear message. And so I'd like to see us do something that is grassroots and grows. And I think we bring other of our groups, when I say groups, and maybe it's a culture and arts, maybe it's other folks, together to enlighten and to educate and to be more tolerant. Because unfortunately, it is, for some of us, as we're maturing, you know, we haven't done it right. And so we need to look to the youth and them be the foundation that will lead us better than we are today. So those are my comments. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah. Medina was first.
Oh, Councilmember Medina, thanks.
So I think we're all right on this. It starts with talking about it, right? You got to talk about what the problems are. You put a resolution in for a call to action, you have a subcommittee made up, we get different community members together, we can do it through Zoom, that's all we can really do right now, right? Getting the community and the schools together and having these discussions and putting together an action plan of what that is. I, right now, don't know what the action plan is. I try my best to show my son to treat people the way you want to be treated, regardless of anything, doesn't matter. So I, I think this is the start of something, where you actually talk about it and then we move forward. So thank you, Councilmember Mason.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that, I think, you know, I'm not sure if anybody else on the council requested action, but I have requested a review of our policies in law enforcement, and City Manager Grogan has actually, in his own newsletter, committed to doing so on his own behalf. So I think we are looking at taking action, I don't think this is just words. But as much as I think the youth are the power of tomorrow, this council didn't support a youth seat on Measure G, this council didn't support two extra seats for diversity, and this council is the highest elected council in San Bruno, we are the leadership. And by not pursuing something like this, it's another message to our communities of color. Thank you. And by not pursuing something like this, it's another message to our communities of color. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. But I just lost my thought on. So there is, you know, I still would like to see us, again, my ask would be that we go after just racism too. And, and I understand the statistics you read are very powerful. And, and I know I've had somebody who's talked to me about the Latin community and what they're suffering with COVID and other stuff. And so I think we're all wanting to do something. We want to leave it better than we found it today. And I think that means broadening our, our net and then bringing folks together. And let's be honest, some people have time right now, whether it's Zoom or not, that I'm sure would love to be a part of this. And I'd like to see us try to get some, something established. And Councilmember Mason is correct. I've asked the city manager too about the policing early on and we've gotten some information. And I think they are taking, you know, it's being taken serious and it really is having some actions. And that's, uh, that's something at the appropriate time for the community to know as well that their leaders, as well as the city manager and the police chief are committed to reviews and improving what we can. So, and I know that's off on the side. So I'd like to see us broaden the net. And maybe that's not the right word to use, but on the racism, I'd like to see it condemned on a broader perspective. And I, and I have not seen the Brisbane Resolution, to be honest, so I don't, I don't know what it says specifically. Sorry, apologies. I just didn't know. So right now, Councilmember Mason, unless I'm hearing wrong, I think I'm hearing from council collectively is to do more, try to have some actionable items, have people meet, whether it's a subcommittee and bringing others together. And maybe we find that we want to address a few things. Not, you know, because I think there are things that need to be addressed in a more global fashion. But I do agree, let, let's, let's hear for the items that we can maybe take action for in our community that'll improve it.
I do think, I think based on the process, we, we do take a vote, right? Because if it's a majority, it moves forward. And if it does, it's not, then it doesn't. So I think just for the record.
I guess I'm, I'm, as you've asked, I'm going to ask, can we send this to a committee? So we can bring back if you want, if we want a resolution, if we want to condemn racism in a broader base? If we want to come up with some ideas to engage with our school community and with our local community? So that we can plan some things. I think it would also be a good opportunity for the, that group also to plan for November for Stand Against Hate. I think they could collaborate together and utilize that. So we get that in early process too. And that would be my ask.
I suspect since you're moving away from the original item, which was just issuing a resolution into forming a subcommittee, that probably would have to be agendized separately.
I don't know.
The attorney.
I would have to ask the city attorney that. Guess who just came on? City Attorney?
Please.
I, I think what it is, is if, if we want to try to establish, well, council subcommittee can be appointed. That's, that's not challenging. There's an actual item here. The, the question is, does it have to be re-agendized in order to appoint a subcommittee to look into condemning racism? Supporting in solidarity with the black community or other communities and working on United Against Hate? And working on community.
So the, the answer is yes. The, it does need to come back to the city council to appoint a subcommittee. That is not on the agenda as an action item. This is almost precisely the facts of a prior case where a city got in trouble because they had a public comment and council member comments and somebody wanted to appoint a subcommittee and they did without having that on the agenda. So I would recommend that.
Okay, so, all right. So much for me saying that. So thank you, Vice Mayor. So no, unless, unless folks want to consider a subcommittee that can be on the next agenda. But I guess we can't really talk about that. I'd have to ask for it to be placed on the next agenda. So we'll put that off to the side. So going to that then, for me, I'd like to have, my ask is to bring it up at the next meeting and make it more broad-based. And you, bringing in racism together, the Stand Against Hate and bringing our schools in. And maybe hopefully have some answers to how they will be going to school going forward. So for that, that, okay, I'm going to ask, I will email the clerk asking for that to be on the next agenda to do that. And, and maybe we can all brainstorm too and then give ourselves a head start of what we can see as far as its potential. But I don't want to narrow it. I'd like to see it. But I really do want to see something tangible. I think every one of us are saying that. We want to see something that, that is worth it and is going to be hopefully long lasting beyond my time.
So if I may, the mayor.
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
The city attorney, should we take a vote? Because this was an issue that came up with one of our previous items, just for clarity.
If someone wants to make a motion, they're, they're able to do so. And if it's seconded, there, there can be a vote. There's no legal requirement that there be votes on, on anything.
Oh, okay. Because the process that was provided to us said that if there's a majority of the council, then it moves on to a staff report. There's actual work placed into the item as a staff report and a resolution. So majority, I figured, means three yeses.
Well, if there is a vote taken, that's correct.
Okay. So I'll motion to move forward with the possible, with the council resolution affirming the city's commitment to stand in solidarity with the black community and condemn racism.
Is there a second to Councilmember Mason's motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Medina, I'm sorry.
I definitely am in support of this. Just, we talked about these other issues. So Linda, perhaps we could, we could expand that and, and, and with the, the idea that we're going forward to have a subcommittee that we're going to talk about what we're actually going to do after, to agendize it, I think is what we're talking about. I think we're, 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 we just kind of got really narrow again where I think we could do a lot more and, and actually get things. It all starts with talking, right? And, and we need to do that more and invite the public to, to participate in that. And, and then we could actually start coming up with some action plan. You know, some, some, some metrics that we want to be able to do. And I think, I think currently it's, it's kind of got back to too narrow. And, and I'm okay with that too. But I think we've talked about getting this agendized so we could, we could do more. And that's what I'm interested in doing. Is it, is there a way you could have a friendly amendment to that? And I'd be happy to second it.
Okay, so, yes, yes, I'm open to that. So how about?
And then I, I'm going to, after Councilmember Mason, Councilmember Davis did have her hand up. But the other thing, or I, if you want to let her speak first, but the other thing too is I think we can't expand. I don't think this, we have to put it on the agenda in a more expanded fashion, which I'm prepared to do and commit to that. But anyway, thank you, Councilmember Medina.
Well, we can just give staff, I think if, if staff, if the city attorney is okay with this, but staff just recommend, I guess some direction to broaden the scope. And within, within the resolution, actually have a plan to either create a subcommittee or use an existing committee like Arts and Culture and then have them actually tasked with, you know, how can we, as a, how can we, in San Bruno, what are the areas maybe we need to address? I don't know. I mean, I think if we're going to broaden it, it's, it is another discussion. And I don't want staff to be going on a fishing expedition.
Agreed. And that's why I feel it needs to be on the agenda so we can broaden that dialogue discussion and appointment and have some time to bring it forward. So all of us have our, our homework. Let me go to Councilmember Davis who's had her virtual hand up.
Thank you. I, I would just say that I think we've jumped to a solution and we should back up. So my support would be a no vote tonight. Because I don't think we're there yet to determine that that's the solution going forward. That I'd like to have it brought back to have a more open discussion on possible solutions to try to, you know, encourage a better community and a more supportive community. So, you know, maybe in the end it, it does include a resolution, but I don't know. So I don't, I don't want to stick to one solution right now until we really have that.
So I, I think Councilmember Mason, we're going to go back to you. Councilmember Medina had asked, and I think you're hearing from a couple of us that we want to broaden. We want to have something with a more detailed conversation that is more broad-based, more actionable. And are you comfortable with allowing that to occur in two weeks?
Yeah, I think, I, I will, I would just say, I think it dilutes, like, I think it dilutes the issue. Because I think that right now what's happening nationwide is really very focused on the black community. But I do, I did hear Commissioner Sal, Councilmember Salazar, when he said, let's find out what's going on in San Bruno. So we're waiting to, you know, we're waiting right now on the police attack reports. And I think if there are other areas that we should look into, we should bring those up at the next council meeting and then see which groups within San Bruno have, you know, some, some, I guess, areas that we need to look into and then create an action plan there or have a committee create an action plan. I, I would have liked the support tonight, but it, it sounds like the support is for a broader resolution and a broader action plan. So that's okay. We can work with that.
All right. I appreciate that. So, and I will go ahead and put in the email to the city clerk to put this on for our meeting on the 28th, under council comments. All right. With that, oh, I, with that, oh, I'm sorry. We're still on council comments. So Councilmember Mason, did you have any more comments from council?
Yeah, I, I guess I just want to make sure that we're requesting some kind of a plan for the library and the Parks and Recs. And I think most of the council agrees. I don't think that's new. I do really want to propose some kind of a cleaning schedule as staff comes back to work. I know we're short staff, but for those of you who are still on, on, on watching this or who are going to watch this later, the city staff did an excellent job for providing a resource booklet probably about two months ago to every resident in San, in San Bruno. And within that book, there's a particular page that addresses homelessness in San Bruno and the rules around homelessness with shelter in place. So now that we know that this is going to last longer, I just feel like for these two communities, it's really more of a burden than we anticipated at the beginning. And if possible, could we get on a monthly or a bi-weekly schedule to clean those two areas with some of our staff? Because if it wasn't for shelter in place, some of these encampments would probably have been moved by now. And then that, that's it for now. Oh, I'm sorry. And then the, just the cell tower, I have just a little note. I didn't know that all these applications have been approved. So it's just some kind of update on what's going on with cell towers, given all of the emails we received in the last two days. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Davis, did you have your hand up? Go ahead.
I was going through my notes from last meeting and I forgot to email, but I wanted to, two issues. So number one is, oh, I mean, I would, I feel so bad for any resident that's living next to a homeless encampment. I, I can't imagine, I mean, the rats, the feces, you name it, the smell, the stench. And then your own safety, right? You come home at night, you're not even sure if you're in a safe environment. So anything we can do to help out those, I wholeheartedly support that. But I was reading my notes and one of the things that, that I continue to think about and wonder if we can come up with a better solution is so, at the beginning of every meeting, we have public comment. And residents take the time to either show up to a meeting or log into a Zoom, which I greatly appreciate. You know, we don't have all the answers, although we feel like we represent the community, we don't have all the answers. And so those residents who call up, who actually voice their concerns, we don't have a response for them because we can't, right? As much as I want to reply to them, we can't. But it, it kind of triggered me tonight too, and, and when you gave the city clerk's email. So I was just wondering, since we're on Zoom, is there anything that we can like display? So then when a resident is calling in or talking that they can see, you know, to email your concerns or questions so that we could get staff follow-up? I would love to follow up with, with this resident that has a question and have a dialogue with them. We've gotten a lot of emails from residents about the library. And I've had, I've sent out a ton of emails responding to them because it's not just the library that's affected. It's a lot of departments that are being affected. And so we don't take these decisions very lightly. But it would be great to give a resident a response who takes the time to communicate to the council about a concern or frustration that they have, that there's a process. So I just, I don't know if we can do, what we can do, because they're not now coming to the senior center. We can't actually go over to them and say, hey, can we get your phone number? Or can we get your email address? Is there something we can do to sort of bridge that gap so we really can figure out who these, who they are and find out if we can find a way to communicate with them? I just don't want their concerns and issues going unresolved. That's not good customer service. Thank you.
Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, I appreciate all the comments on that and I'll withhold talking about it so we don't have a discussion about it, right? Because it's not agendized. And here we are at the end of the night. It's getting late. But excellent comments by all. We should figure something out on how to get back to people a little better. I just wanted to bring up, you know, this COVID. I got tested at, a couple of weeks ago. It says I'm negative, so I'm glad to hear that. But you know what? That was two weeks ago, right? And so I just wanted everybody to keep that in mind, that it's just a snapshot and the numbers are going the wrong way. And we all, we all have to continue, you know, not trying to cheat and get around, well, it's okay to do this, you know? Do as much as you can, stay home, wear your mask, wash your hands, all that good stuff. And we'll get through this sooner. It's because that wasn't happening that we're going through this longer, okay? So that's about it. Take advantage of those free testing here in San Bruno. It really, it relieves some pressure, but then again, it's kind of like, okay, what about, what about tomorrow? Just be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, anything for you or are you good? Okay. For me, I, I got my results back last night late. And at this point, on the eighth, when I got tested, I am negative at that point. So I made it through the Fourth of July, but it's a very, it's a snapshot. It, it shouldn't relieve anybody from feeling they can just go back to normal and you're okay. What I do want to say is I did want to thank some of the members of the Professional Firefighters Association who volunteered at both locations that day. Probably wouldn't have recognized them anyway because they, you know, they've all got masks on and they're, they're dressed in casuals because they're representing the association. And also even when the governor came out with the instant order, we had staff that were walking down to businesses, handing out leaflets and getting education because not everybody's watching the governor. Then maybe they are. So staff has been proactive in trying to educate and communicate and that. And I think there is becoming a frustration level with folks and echoing what my colleagues are saying. And, and really, we have to do what it takes because as I'm on a lot of calls or Zooms, as some of us are, the numbers are, you know, this county is not on the watch yet, but it easily could happen. So I know everybody's anxious, but we've got to do the right thing. And again, it's not just for yourself, but it's for the other person. So with that, we are going to go into, we're going to go back to closed session, a conference with labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. With that said, I want to thank everybody, all staff and thank you colleagues and thank you city clerk. And we're going to adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on July 28, 2020. And the city manager sent us a new Zoom link for the second closed session. Thank you. Good night all.